Good evening, everyone. It's Pastor Richard Fuller here. Hi Pastor. And you're with First Baptist Church of Merritt Island?
Yes.
Could you lead us in prayer, please?
Father, I thank you for this day that you have made. And Lord, as we gather tonight, we gather as a grateful people. Thank you for your faithfulness. And I thank you for the leadership that you have put in place from our commissioners and all those in leadership in Brevard County. I pray, God, that you would guard their hearts and minds, and I pray that they would be encouraged tonight. I thank you, Lord, for your new mercies today, and by faith, new mercies tomorrow. You are so faithful. Your steadfast love endures forever. So, Lord, we need you. We pray for wisdom. We pray for just a very productive meeting tonight. And we thank you for the privilege of living in Brevard County. And I pray these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you so much. All right. And with that, I'd like to welcome everybody to the regular Brevard County Commission meeting of August 2nd. Let's put this meeting to order. Commissioner Tabia?
Please stand and join me in the board.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I have to say, I think it's pretty cool that that gentleman came from the back to say the pledge. I don't know if anybody noticed that, but kudos to him. All right, we have no minutes for approval. Commissioner Smith, you have an Eagle Scout?
Yes, I do.
You want to recognize?
Yes. Maddox Jurgensen, front and center. Good seeing you. Thank you for being here. I'm going to read this, and then I'll give you the floor, and you can say whatever you have to say to us. Whereas Maddox Scott Jurgensen has achieved the rank of Eagle Scout, the highest rank awarded to a Boy Scout, by completing the demanding requirements of personal development, leadership, and community service. And whereas Maddox started Cub Scouts at five years of age, crossed over to Boy Scouts at age 11, earned 55 merit badges, held several leadership positions, including Senior Patrol Leader, spent 100 nights camping, participated in scouting for food, beach cleanups, attended the 24th World Scout Jamboree in West Virginia, volunteered his time towards other Scouts Eagle projects, and met his goal of earning Eagle Scout at the age of 17. And whereas only about 6% of all Boy Scouts earn the Eagle Scout rank, a performance-based achievement with standards that have been well-maintained over the years. And whereas Maddox is an Edgewood Junior/Senior High School, class of 22 graduate, where he completed honors and advanced placement classes, maintaining a 3.0 GPA, earned high school varsity letters in track and field and soccer in high school, and competed in club-level soccer, was involved in key clubs, sources of strength, student government, Fellowship of Christian Athletes. And whereas Maddox's Eagle projects raised over $1,200 in donations and led 38 adults and youth to feed 200 on-duty Brevard County and municipal city first responders lunch, ranging between State Road 520 and State Road 192, a project totaling 480 service hours. And whereas the lessons learned by obtaining the Eagle Scout rank are essential to not only the life of the scout, but also the enhancement of the nation's leadership. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Brevard County Board of County Commissioners does hereby unanimously recognize and commend Maddox Scott Jurgensen for his outstanding efforts in obtaining his Eagle Scout rank through Boy Scouts of America Troop 337. And we offer congratulations and best wishes for a successful future as he joins the United States Coast Guard this fall. Done, ordered, and adopted in regular session the second day of August 22nd. Madam Chair, I move to accept this resolution.
Motion by Commissioner Smith, second by Commissioner Pritchett. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
You have the floor.
As Commissioner Smith said, my name is Maddox Scott Jurgensen. I'd like to start by thanking the Commissioner Smith and the rest of the county commission. This speech will not be like any other speech I have given. This is my pow-me-a-re speech where I quoted Jesse Ventura or our last scout meeting, thanking all our great leaders for my Boy Scout troop. So I'll start like this. Dear world and the great people of it, I would not be standing here without the opportunities I've been given, and I'm so happy that I took advantage of them. From playing soccer, being part of many clubs, being part of such an amazing family, being a Boy Scout, and honestly, my favorite opportunity, having the chance to be myself. I know I said this speech would not be like any other, but I could not resist putting in a quote. Instead of quoting Jesse Ventura, I decided to quote a former president with my all-time favorite quote. "My fellow Americans, ask not what your country can do for you, ask what you can do for your country." John Fitzgerald Kennedy. I've always taken this quote and used it in my life to help others and think for more than just myself. Again, I'd like to thank Kurt Smith and the rest of the county commission. Here is to the next adventure I take on in my life, starting next week as I leave for Coast Guard boot camp. I ask that whenever you see an American flag, you should just look at it and take the time to thank all our military, veterans, and future military. Thank you.
Thank you.
Maddox.
Maddox. Commissioner Pritchett?
Yeah, I just want you to know that we're very proud of you. It's no small thing of what you've accomplished. And I also want to thank you for signing up to defend this great nation and the people.
Thank you, Maddox. We appreciate everything you've done. Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Good luck in boot camp.
Thank you. Thank you again, Commissioners.
Thank you. Thank you. Commissioner Tabia?
Thank you, Madam Chair. With your permission, I'd like to read a resolution concerning Myra Haley, I believe, hopefully her son Mason, daughter Meredith, present.
They're here.
Super. May I go ahead, Madam Chair?
Yes.
A resolution on behalf of Brevard County Board of Commissioners commemorating Ms. Myra Haley. Whereas Ms. Myra Haley was born in Indiana and moved to Brevard County in 1992. And whereas after moving to Brevard, Ms. Haley formed a corporation with her father known as Suntree Partners and contribute significantly to the Suntree area, reaching its current level of prosperity. And whereas having an exceptional business mind, Ms. Haley fulfilled her dreams of being involved in the community and extensive success developing the area. And whereas in addition to her legacy and successful business model, Ms. Haley was also the quintessential philanthropist. Whereas Ms. Haley quietly made numerous charitable donations to organizations such as Johns Hopkins University, Mayo Clinic, Brevard County, Health First, Brevard Cultural Alliance, Junior Achievement, The Haven for Children, Meals on Wheels, and Habitat for Humanity. And whereas in addition to financial contributions, Ms. Haley also donated her time and knowledge by serving as a member of Health First Founders Society, Director of Health First Foundation Board, on the Board of Trustees for Eastern Florida State College, and on the Board of Directors for the King Center of Performing Arts. And whereas Ms. Haley served her community as well by being an integral part of Eastern Florida State College growth and success, as well as the prosperity of secondary education through her time serving as chairperson of Holy Trinity's Board of Trustees. And whereas for all her hard work and dedication to Brevard, Ms. Haley was recognized as the outstanding philanthropist of 2012 by the local chapter of Association of Fundraising Professionals. And whereas her unexpected passing is cause for great sadness, not only by her family, but the community as a whole. Now therefore, be it resolved that beacon of light that Ms. Haley was for Brevard County will shine for many decades to come, and her business ventures and philanthropy work will continue to have positive impacts on Brevard County. Done, ordered, and adopted in regular session, second day of August 2022. Motion to approve, Madam Chair.
Motion by Commissioner Tabia, second by Commissioner Smith. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I'm going to turn it over here. One second. I just, I had the privilege of working with your mom when it came to Eastern Florida State College. I'm a graduate of Brevard Community College, and she was a strong advocate, not only for nursing, but the first two years of college. And it was a pleasure working with her. We often hear that she's the type of woman that, you know, we'd want our, I have a daughter, we'd want our daughter to grow up to be, that's not true. We, daughters, sons, and everything in between. Your mom is a model citizen, and I was privileged to spend just a little bit of time with her. And Brevard County will be a better place because of all she did for those in need, those bettering themselves. And thank you so much for sharing your mom with Brevard County. If you guys want to speak, I'm sorry I never met you, but man, if you're half as good as your mom, you guys are great individuals.
Thank you so much. We know what an honor this is. So, thank you.
Thank you. That was very thoughtful, Commissioner Tabia. Thank you for recognizing her. All right, moving on to consent. Does Commission want to have anything pulled? I don't have any cards except for questions, if there are some. I have a motion to approve consent.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Tabia. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Okay, moving on to public comment. Anita Killen?
If you could just state your name for the record, please?
Hello, my name is Anita Killen, and I'm an advocate for registered citizens and their families, and I serve on the Brevard County Reentry Task Force. I attended the May 17th meeting when there was a discussion by the commissioners on the recidivism rate of registered citizens. I was politely reminded that my time was up before I had the chance to correct each of you on the idea that the recidivism rate of registered citizens is, quote, "through the roof." I don't know where you're getting that information, or if it was just made up for shock value, but I have submitted to you a handout that summarizes 34 studies, including the U.S. Department of Justice, which is a nine-year study on recidivism rates of people with past sexual offenses, also 29 individual states, including Florida, in which the recidivism rate was reported as 5.2%. You'll see that the average is between 1% and 7%. So that means that between 93% and 99% of the individuals are not reoffending. It also tells you that between 93% and 99% of the new offenses are being committed by people that are not on the sex offense registry. So here we are going through a lot of effort to revote on a failed policy that was, that is the subject of a current lawsuit against Brevard County. If a business wants to self-certify as a park, I say let them. But their decision should not be forced on to the businesses that are surrounding them by 1,000 feet. And what procedures are in place by that business that self-certifies to prevent persons not on the registry from committing a sexual offense in their park? It puts Brevard County in a position of tortuous interference. I had to look that up. I was looking for a term that meant when a entity intentionally interferes with a business. Since when did it become legal for a government body to tell a business who can and cannot shop in their store, who can and cannot use their services? So regarding why we're really here today, it's to discuss an amendment that passed illegally in 2020, for which Brevard County is currently being sued for that action. It was unconstitutional then, it's unconstitutional now. You denied people that wanted to speak at the meeting from attending then, and you have denied people again today. Because there are individuals that wanted to attend today, but because of a 24-hour time limit, they were denied access. So the registry, the self-certified registry that passed two years ago, there's nobody on that registry. I can't find it anywhere. It's not on your website. The Sheriff's Department doesn't know anything about it, but yet we're here wasting time voting on it again. I would hope that you would please consider potential damages to Brevard County and use those resources for education. Thank you.
All right, Barbara Harris?
I wouldn't do that.
Hello, Commissioners. I'm Barbara Harris. I'm going to read to you a letter sent regarding the opposition to the proximity ordinance amendment. So you need to realize that people in other states are talking about what goes on here in Florida. Dear Commissioners, this ordinance is anti-business, unfair, and likely unconstitutional. The unintended consequences to businesses who choose not to participate is not likely to be popular. In the time of post-pandemic economy, businesses are trying to recover and should not be forced to lose patrons because someone 800 feet away in another business partakes of that option to forbid registered citizens from patronizing their establishment. I am ashamed of how we treat citizens who have paid the price for their mistake and yet continue to be punished for the rest of their lives. It is not the American way to hold someone continuously accountable for something they've already made restitution for. If we are truly are a Christian nation, then mercy and forgiveness, along with second chances, are all part of our founding fathers' dream for life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. That's not lost by anyone else who commits a crime. So why for this population specifically? Shame on whoever thought of this nonsense, and shame on anyone who kowtows to go along with it. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, that's all the public comment cards I have. So moving on to public hearings, item H1.
Good evening, Commissioners. H1 is a public utility and drainage easement for 2490 Sweetwater Court. Mr. Sedoti in District 1 requesting the vacate of a portion of two 10-foot-wide public utility and drainage easements lying between two lots for the construction of a single-family home. There's no issues.
I make a motion to approve, Madam Chair.
I have a motion by Commissioner Pritchett, second by Commissioner Tabia. I have no cards on this item. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item H2?
H2 is a public utility easement for 1751 Carpenter Road, Sherwood Estates, for Mr. Townsend, District 1, requesting the vacate of a portion of two 5-foot-wide public utility easements lying between two lots to allow an existing single-family home to be removed as an encroachment. There are no issues.
Commissioner Pritchett?
I make a motion to approve, Mia.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Pritchett, second by Commissioner Tabia. Again, I have no cards on this item. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item H3?
Item H3 is a public utility and drainage easement for 912 Harbor Pines Drive, Merritt Island, Mr. and Mrs. Overdorf, District 2, requesting the vacate of a 5-foot portion of a 10-foot-wide public utility and drainage easement for the construction of a pool. There are no issues.
All right. Commission, what's your pleasure? Motion by Commissioner Pritchett to approve, second by Commissioner Tabia. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item H4?
Good evening, Commissioners. Item H4 is a public hearing for the adoption of an extension to the Biosolids Application Moratorium. The original ordinance was enacted in October 2019. Typically, we've done 180-day extensions, but we were asked to look into a longer extension. So this one is proposed for 365 days.
Right, Commission?
Make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Smith, second by Commissioner Tabia. I have no cards on this item. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Item H5? Guys are playing musical chairs over there.
Very quick. Good evening, Commissioners. Item H5 is requesting three actions from the Commission. First action is adoption of the annual solid waste disposal special assessment rate resolution for fiscal year 2023. That includes a increase that was approved by the Board on July 12th. The second is to adopt the annual solid waste collection, recycling, and container resolution, and that includes a 3% increase as per the contract with Waste Management. And the third action is to ratify, confirm, and certify the annual disposal, collection, and recycling special assessment rolls to the Brevard County tax collector.
All right, Commission, what's your pleasure? I have no cards.
Make a motion to approve.
The first item, the resolution, or can we, do we, do we need separate motions for all of these? Christine?
It can be one motion.
Okay. All right, does that cover all three?
Yes.
Okay. Commissioner Smith, with motion to approve?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Pritchett. I have no cards. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item H6?
Commissioners, this item requests the Board amend Section 74, Article 6 of the Brevard County Code pertaining to restrictions for sexual offenders and sexual predators. It establishes a business self-certification registry by amending the definition of park in Section 74-101 and creating a Section 74-102.5 business self-certification registry. It also amends Section 74-102 to provide limited exceptions that permit a sexual offender and sexual predator to conduct official business at a Brevard County or municipal government office and to be able to attend public meetings.
All right. I have four cards. Would Commission desire to hear from the public comment first? Is that okay? Okay. Vincent Rinaldi?
Hi, good evening. My name is Vincent Rinaldi. I'm a resident of Brevard County. Let's be clear what you're doing this evening. You are reconsidering and revoting on the Business Self-Certification Amendment to Ordinance Number 74-102.5, an amendment that you first passed in August of 2020. The only reason you're doing this tonight is because back in August 2020, when you first voted on it, you violated the Sunshine Law because you intentionally excluded from that meeting people who are required to register under Florida law. We had to go to federal court and sue the county to appear here tonight to protect the right of all people to stand and speak before their elected representatives on important issues. For years, people who were required to register have been easy political targets, and laws like the one you are voting on tonight have been used for personal political gain. We know what's going on, and you can no longer silence us by excluding us from the public meetings. I was here back in May. I was here back in May with several other individuals and spoke about the proximity ordinance. After we left, the dialogue continued amongst the Commissioners as evidenced by the video of the entire proceeding. The consensus was to enact regulations to always protect the children. This is commendable, and I agree. However, preventing me from going to CVS to pick up a prescription doesn't do that. In fact, it puts me and my partner in danger. How does preventing me from taking my life partner to a hospital protect children? It doesn't. The proposal regarding business self-certification raises the same questions. How does allowing a business to define themselves as a park protect children? It doesn't. This only serves to deny other businesses in the area their legal right to conduct their business. An example of this might be a liquor store self-declarating. Children don't congregate at liquor stores. Perhaps a hardware store or gas station self-declares. These two are not areas where children congregate. These draconian measures are nothing more than punishment for a crime you think will be committed. It is not your job or the right to meet out punishment. This is the court's responsibility. When a person is released from prison and completes their probation, they re-enter society with the same constitutional rights still intact. As such, they enjoy the same right to the pursuit of life, liberty, and happiness as you do. I was going to speak about recidivism rates, but Mrs. Killen spoke very well about that, so I'm going to skip that part. Upon looking at all the facts, I'm sure that a reasonable person would conclude that a business being allowed to self-declare as a park for the business of prohibiting registered citizens from being within 1,000 feet of said business does not protect children in the least. In addition, any reasonable person who read all the dozens of studies conducted by reputable people would conclude that recidivism rates for registered sex offenders are very low and not through the roof, as previously stated. I would also argue that a reasonable person would agree that going to CVS or a hospital does not threaten children in any way. Perhaps going to a gas station or liquor store would also fall into this category. Certainly, coming here is not a threat to children either. The proximity law is not right, does nothing to protect anyone, and is against every constitutional right I have as an American citizen and should be repealed immediately. Thank you.
Charles Munsey Jr.? You could just give us the, and we'll pass them down. Thank you.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Charles Munsey Jr., and I am a resident of Brevard County. Regardless of how you vote tonight on this amendment, and I am asking you to vote against it, tonight is a victory for the First Amendment, Florida's Sunshine Law, and all the people of Brevard County. The only reason you are holding this vote tonight is because we sued the county and federal court to enforce our constitutional right to attend and speak at public meetings. Tonight is a replay of the same vote you took in August of 2020 when you first passed the very same law. Tonight, unlike two years ago, this meeting is open to everyone, including people who are required to register under Florida law. We can no longer be silenced, and our voice is loud and clear. Laws like this make no sense and solve no problem. I own my home in Port St. John. I am a Florida taxpayer, and I'm a 29-year military veteran. I sold my home in Virginia Beach and built my retirement home in Brevard. I moved here to help my ailing parents, both of whom since passed away. My children and their families now live in Brevard. I met my wife in the Navy in 1974. We were married in 1976. We were married for 20 years. I retired in 1991, and she in 1993. We looked forward to an active retirement. In 1996, cancer claimed her. I was brought up in the Pentecostal Church and had deep religious convictions. Her death challenged those convictions, and for four years, I found myself questioning my faith. During that time, I made a bad decision, had a failure that went so much against my character. This happened in Virginia. I paid my debt to society in Virginia. I have been removed from the Virginia Registry. When I moved to Florida, I unfortunately started this evolution all over again, even though I have never committed a crime in Florida. In fact, I was removed from probation 11 years early. I have always been involved with community affairs wherever I have lived and have never been a community threat. I now live in a great community and have wonderful neighbors. I cannot even understand why this amendment is even being considered. It solves no problem. It makes no one safer. It interferes potentially with adjoining businesses. I believe it just may fall into the category of intentional interference or vicarious negligence. Is this what you really want? I ask that you carefully consider the facts. You were provided 13 letters in the past containing these facts. Thank you very much.
Thank you. James Martin?
Hello, my name's James Martin. Can you hear me? Go ahead and step closer. Hello? There I am. Hi. I have been a proud member of Brevard County and retired Air Force for a very long time. And what's going on with this Board is very disturbing to me. It is capricious. It's out of control. It's not constitutional. Somebody's got a vendetta, and it needs to stop because you're going to cost us, the county taxpayer, money. You're already being sued, and it's going to happen again. Whatever you do tonight, count on I'm going to pay attention to who's voting, because then I'm going to vote you out, because this is wrong. I spent my whole life defending the Constitution. This ain't it. Have a good day.
Howard Offner? Say your name, please.
Howard Offner. You guys are trying to pass the same failed policy again. I was here in 2020.
I have a dog in this by you. Sorry.
Please don't interrupt.
My son's a registered citizen. I am not, but I do have a dog. He's not a dog. He's treated like one. He's ruined his life, but anyways. Why are you putting Brevard taxpayers through this a second time when it's failed the first Anita's tried numerous times to find any business that signed up for this, and the sheriffs and the county commission have no listing of any business that has signed up for this. So how does someone know to go to Starbucks on 192 and get a coffee or get arrested and put in jail for the rest of their lives for something they may have done 20, 30, 40, 50 years ago? How much will it cost Brevard taxpayers in lawsuits once businesses understand that Brevard County is intentionally interfering with the businesses and threatening arrests of certain persons who are trying to patronize the business? I would suggest you put those tax dollars to better use in schools, help educate the children and parents on sexual abuse that happens in the home and in schools by people they know, not strangers on a list. Statistically, they're less likely to offend, and Anita's talked about this forever. You guys don't seem to care, but please vote no on this amendment. Thank you very much.
Julie Martin?
Hi, my name is Julie Martin. I live in Volusia County, and for the past 16 years, I have housed sex offenders. I have seven different properties. I currently house 70 sex offenders. I deal with them every day. I will house 70 tomorrow, and I will house 70 the next day. They are not what you think they are. Peeing on the side of the road as a contractor is a sex offender. Yes, there are some people who are not pretty people, and it's not happy to talk about. I understand that. But the more restrictions you put on people, the more desperate you make them. The more desperate you make them, the more problems you have in your county. They are going to live here. They have to live here. They live in every county in Florida, lots of them. They're not going anywhere. So the more difficult you make it for them, the more difficult you are going to, the more, sorry, not difficult, the more ability you're going to give them to actually commit a crime. And when they do commit a crime, it's not that they had another sex crime. They failed to register because they were living in the woods. They didn't do something on time. They didn't put their tag properly when they went to register. That means they re-offend. That's what it looks like. That's why you think they are re-offending. That's why you think their recidivism is high. Every time they do something that's a technical difficulty, it looks like their crime is committed all over again. It is not. You need to understand what the law is. You need to understand what the sheriff does to them. You need to understand how it's listed for them. I understand this because it's what I do every day. The more difficult you make it on them, the more difficult it will be in your county every day. I had a property here. I had six people living in it. The neighbors didn't like it. Everybody was working. Everybody was successful. There was no problems. They decided there was a park down the street. It wasn't a park. It was a drainage ditch. It could have been a park, but it was not a park. It is still not a park today, seven years later. They gave my guys 48 hours to get out. You put them in a desperate situation. The more you do it, the more problems you will have. You will have crimes committed that are worse. What looks like recidivism isn't. Please educate yourselves properly because you are calling something wrong. Thank you.
All right, that's all the cards I have. I keep hearing about recidivism, and just excuse me for a second. Just Department of Justice data here. These are sexual recidivism rates of child molesters. After five years of boys molested, 23% after five years. After 10 years, 27.8%, and after 15 years, 35%. Sexual offenders molested girls, 9.2% after five years, 13.1% after 10 years, 16.3% after 15 years. Committed incest, 6.4% after five years, 9.4% after 10 years, 13.2% after 15 years. Quick Google search. This is Department of Justice. I'm not making these numbers up. So maybe, you know, people are okay with numbers like 315 molested boys after five years, another 105 after 10, another 95 after 15. I could keep going through the numbers, but these aren't made-up numbers. These aren't, these are not agenda-driven data. This is from the Department of Justice. And these are sexual recidivism rates of sexual crimes, not people forgetting a tag or, you know, shoplifting or anything like that. So that's all my input is. I think I've, you know, spoken pretty passionately on this item. I just wish people would stop calling themselves registered citizens and call them registered sex offenders or registered predators or really what they are. I mean, they're so proud to be here and demand rights, but, you know. Commissioner Tabia?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And just for a brief overview, and again, I agree with what many of the folks up here said. This ordinance is very similar to the one that came previously. I do want to point out a couple minor differences. Parks is defined, redefined, as all publicly owned or operated property and private property specifically designed as being used for recreational purpose and where children regularly congregate. So that's a slight change. Second of all, I would ask that we amend this where that we make Parks and Rec as a collector of data, and we add in the ordinance the address of the Parks and Rec Department, the administrative office in Viera, as well as where all those businesses can register. And the folks that came up here are absolutely right. This came out of, this came out of my office, and I want to thank not only everyone's support up here, but the sheriff, who also was helpful for getting this in place, and I dropped the ball. I didn't, you know, businesses are very busy and are not sitting around and watching the county commission. You're absolutely right, and that should have fallen to my office. And tomorrow, I will get a list of those offices and let them know that they now have the opportunity to register, because you're right, no one had, and that's my fault, and I thank you for bringing that to my attention so we can together keep kids in a safer place. So thank you. Thank you for coming here because I feel a lot more comfortable when there is law enforcement around you guys.
Commissioner Pritchett?
Yeah, I want to just to make a couple observations. When we did the first-time ordinance, the spirit of that was never to keep anybody from coming here doing public communications. That's why we knew we needed to fix that. You should be able to represent yourself in front of your elected officials. And doing that, we realized there was a school close by, so we had to do some changes so that people could contact the sheriff and make sure they were able to come in here. As far as unconstitutional, it's constitutional. And, you know, you have to register to go to schools, yes? Is that unconstitutional? Is it unconstitutional that you have to register to go to daycares? That's not unconstitutional. So the thing is, you know, you serve time, you get to get out, but you don't get back privilege when you do certain things. Any time in your life, if you lose trust, there's some trust you never regain depending on things that you do, and the problem is, it's a very vulnerable population this happened to, and I commend the person who got up and said that they agree children are priority, and I thank you for that. But the situation we have here is, we do have it on us as a responsibility to make sure we're doing our best to protect vulnerable populations. So I think this is, this is a good thing to do because we are getting in places where children come together and congregate, like schools and daycares. You can't talk.
Please don't interrupt, sir.
The hospital is going to thousands of people.
Please don't interrupt, sir.
Go ahead and throw me out if you want to.
You can't interrupt the meeting, sir.
You can't go to home, hospital. You got to, for how long, all you want, but we can't do this, please.
Okay, please stop talking. If you want to stay, you have to stop talking.
Well, you know what fair is, that you don't do certain things. I, I, don't, don't. Quiet, officer.
I am not a sex offender, and I don't care about anybody being a problem. Thank you, I will, because I'm sick of these people. You're not here. 800 feet, 1,000 feet. You don't know how far 1,000 feet is. It's the fucking lot.
Sarah.
You can't even go to home. I'm leaving, thank you. I appreciate your time. What we're doing is capricious.
Okay, we're going to take five minutes so they can stop this. Commissioner Pritchett.
Thank you, ma'am. So Commissioner Tavaia, I'm going to support this, sir. But I do want to mention, we've heard from people that feel like they're restricted in some things, and especially the families. My heart really goes out for that. But I'm sorry, I work at a ministry and I deal with the victims every day. I deal with these kids that have grown up with this. It never leaves them. So, you know, we have people that have to live their life with things that have totally messed them up. And I, I just, this just isn't something that just goes away. So I just want to make that statement. But Commissioner Tavaia, you have my support on this. People are allowed to come to these meetings. You just have to do what you have to do, the same if you go to a school or to a daycare. Thank you, ma'am.
All right. Commission, it's your pleasure.
Madam Chair, motion to approve with the addition of the business self-certifying registry to be held by Parks and Rec and the address to be listed in the ordinance. That's the one addition. Madam Chair.
I have a motion by Commissioner Tavaia.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Pritchett. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item H7.
Good evening, Commissioners. This is the second and final public hearing for the county's five-year consolidated plan and one-year action plan, which encompasses our home and CDBG programs. As lead agency for the four cities in our consortium, Palm Bay, Melbourne, Cocoa and Titusville, it also encompasses their aspects of their plans for CDBG and then overall for the consortium itself. The five-year plan itself acts as a framework or structure for potential projects and focuses for our one-year action plans, which act as implementation plans. We did a 30-day public comment period. All those comments were included in the plan. They fell into two main categories. One was for the areas that we actually solicited, which was comments directly on the plan. The other were for comments on process, which while we accepted them, will be held until we redo our citizen participation plan in the coming year. Our consultant, Stephanie Jennings with Cloud Burst Consulting Group, is here if there are any questions.
All right, Commission, it's your pleasure. I have a motion by Commissioner Pritchett, second by Commissioner Tavaia. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item H8. Commissioner Tavaia.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This issue was brought up at my board report on the July 19 meeting. In February 2021, I brought forward an initiative to change Section 2247 of Brevard County Code relating to the purchase of or lease of land owned by the county. The change removed the requirement for a supermajority vote for such transactions. That's where I made the error. It was, it was my intention at the time to change code relating only to sales or leases that were at or above market rate and to leave a supermajority requirement for a nominal lease or sale. So this amendment will add back the language as it was before that makes a majority plus one vote a requirement for non-competitive sales or leases. I'm open for question, but to make a motion to approve, Madam Chair.
All right, I have two cards. Anita Unwrath.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Anita Unwrath. As I looked at this this afternoon, I was confused about the wording of it. And so I, with the help of Christine in your office, Commissioner, she helped me to find the agenda item online. And then I was even more confused. So I read through the whole thing and I don't understand, since there are only four of you right now, what does this mean? Does this mean all four of you would have to agree on everything? It would make more sense to me if this went into effect in November, when we do have five commissioners. And then that would be, the supermajority would be three of you plus one. But right now, I don't understand what it means. So could somebody please explain that to me? Does that mean all four of you have to agree on everything all the time? In that case, I would be against this amendment because I don't think it makes sense. Because you live in, in different areas. You are representing different people in the communities. And to get 100% consensus of all four of you, every time you have to look at something like this, I think that would be difficult. So can somebody answer the question, how does this supermajority work with four of you?
Madam Chair. Okay, and I appreciate you getting involved in this. This is for a very narrow or tailored type of, of question, one that hasn't come to this board in quite some time. This is anytime that the county either sells or leases land at a rate that's below market value. So no, I imagine there'll be some votes up here that will go, you know, not 100% and they will go forward. However, not on this agenda or any one in the past recently has there been one where the county was either leasing land at below market rate or, or selling land. That is the only thing this does. In fact, this goes back to the way, this was my error. I changed everything. I meant only to change to make it easier, in fact, for the sale of land instead of needing a supermajority, just needing a simple majority. As far as there only being four of us, unfortunately, the situation has, has come forward and we can't stop business the way it is. But there's nothing on this agenda. And like I said, there's nothing been, I can't remember the last time we made a vote on, on selling land at below market rate or, or leasing at below market rate. So it's got nothing to do with 99% of the votes that we make. But should it come up, it would need four votes. So in other words, it would need to be unanimous. Does that clear it up?
Yes, I guess. But I, in that case, with just four of you, I would urge you not to pass this because it, it doesn't make sense that, to me. If there were five of you and you needed four, as the commission should be with that, that would be a supermajority. But right now, having a unanimous of all four, thank you for that explanation. But what, what is the next lease that's going to come up in the county? What is the next organization that is going to have a problem?
Madam Chair.
It's hard to, because you, I'm trying to give her time.
Yeah, sorry. Yeah, sorry. And just, it's not any lease. This is only a lease below market rate, just to be clear. Or a sale below market rate.
Okay.
Which is, I work with Hundred Acre Hollows, you know, and we have a lease with the county and we're in our second five-year lease, renewable 10 times. I don't know how this would affect us and other organizations, so that's my concern. Thank you.
Can we ask Christine for clarification? Because I don't think what Commissioner Tavaia is doing would affect Hundred Acre Hollows at all.
It would when they come up for a new lease.
Well, and that's, right, well, they have five. How many more renewals do you have?
We have, the initial was a five-year lease, renewable 10 times. That's 55 years. We're in year six and I probably won't be here for the end of the lease.
I don't think I will.
End of the renewals.
So that's, Madam Chair, that would be four years, four years from now? So I assume we're going to have a fifth person in four years?
I mean, that's just for that specific one, yeah.
Okay, yeah. Just, just to be clear, I don't think that's coming up.
Commissioner Pritchett.
Commissioner Tavaia, when you have on here non-competitive leases, you're meaning that leases that we have, that we have not put out to bid? Is that correct on the clarification, sir?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Below market rate.
Okay, well, if it's below market and they do an RFP, you're okay with it still?
Okay, so.
I know.
This, this is not, this is not targeting Hundred Acre Hollows.
No, I'm not, I'm not thinking that at all.
Their lease, I'm not in favor of it, but their lease won't come up in the time in which, this is the way it's always been.
I get it, but we changed it a while ago.
Yeah, but this was an error on, on my office's fault. My intent was to make it easier for the board. I was in the minority. I was always voting no. If we picked off one person, I just didn't think that was, that was very fair. So I said, you know, let's make this a majority vote instead of a supermajority vote. I inadvertently included market rate, sorry, below market rate in that. And, and I'm just trying to clean that language up to, to the way it is before. If it makes you feel any better, I, I think there are some ways that I potentially can abstain from the Hundred Acre Hollow vote.
No, I'm thinking about, let me tell you what I'm thinking about. Is we've got some target areas up, area in Gibson where they work leases. They go out for RFP and they're probably below market. But in that area, it's, it's, it's good with, where they're serving the area. So I'm thinking maybe if you could do for non-competitive leases and then, or if a lease has gone out for bid. Because if we have to do a, a four vote here on that or, or even a super, if it's in your own district and you're talking about that, there's a possibility you could get a real stinker of a commission up here and just get some people out of some things they're doing.
Madam Chair.
Can we listen to this public comment?
Sure, sorry, I apologize.
Kathy Angerin. Just so we can, I only have one more card.
Sure.
Yes, good afternoon, Commissioners. Kathy Angerin, representing Brevard Cultural Alliance. That's okay. It happens all the time. And, and we are Brevard County's designated local arts agency. We want to thank you for your past support and hope that we can continue to count on your future support. I would like to respectfully request that you not support this agenda item. Brevard Cultural Alliance is currently the beneficiary of office space in the county's Merritt Island Service Complex. And we do hope to continue in that partnership with the county. Our lease renewal is, is going to be coming before this commission much, much sooner than Hundred Acre Hollows. If this board is inclined to support this proposal, I would echo the suggestion that in fairness, you not take this action until there's a fifth sitting county commissioner. That would level the playing field for agencies with leases. And so I thank you for your time and for your consideration.
When is the BCA lease up?
At the end of September.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions?
Madam Chair.
Sure.
Thank you. And this would, and I'm sorry, I'm asking a question that I haven't asked before, but this would go to staff. And I haven't looked at your lease. I apologize. I don't know how much space it is, but I know space is a premium. When this does come up, just to give you, I mean, do we, have you looked at how much space the BCA occupies? And whether or not there is any county functions that could potentially fill that space? That we would have to make a decision? Just to give you a heads up here.
There is, I think it's a little over 2,800 square feet at the Merritt Island complex. And if there, if that, if that space were vacated, there are probably two agencies that would have indicated that they would have the need or the desire to occupy probably majority of that space.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Right, thank you. All right, I don't have any more cards. Commissioner Pritchett.
Commissioner Tavaia, so if, if you could put in there the non-competitive leases that have not gone out for bid. Or we could also do, right now, you could do the, supermajority could be three out of four votes or four out of five. I just, yeah. So that's just, I, we've been through some very weird commission protocol here over the last year or so. So I'm, I'm just thinking about a couple of park things that I do have out there. And I know it would be below what looks like market. But again, at their target areas and, and, and it just serves a purpose. And there's only certain groups that are even going to come in and bid. So that, that would give me more comfort if we could make sure that's protected.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I would be more than willing to add that as long as we could also add in the situation that was just brought up here. If RFP looks at outside of the organization, if the supermajority also would be needed if, if we potentially had a need inside the organization. So if, I guess if the county could participate in their own RFP, because an RFP would look at outside organizations. You heard that there's certain space that may be needed by, by county offices. And I don't even know charter offices might need that space as well. So if, if we could say RFP or there was a certified need by county employees, I'd be more than willing to, that would be a friendly amendment.
Commissioner Smith.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My question is for Commissioner Tavaia. Is this something that we have to decide tonight? Because my thought is, why don't we wait until we have a fifth commissioner, which, at which point it's possible, I won't be here anyway. But if this isn't a pressing issue, why not wait till we have five members present?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I'll ask you this, Commissioner Smith. Does that argument work on the rest of tonight? Because I may, I may use it just a little bit. And you may not like it when I use it.
Well, you know.
I'm just saying, goose gander.
And I can say, I can say, yeah, it does or it doesn't. It's just, I don't see a pressing issue that is needed, that this is necessary to decide tonight. But I've got two other commissioners here to weigh in.
Madam Chair, just a question. You brought it up, so.
I don't know.
Is that argument valid the rest of this meeting?
If you ask me on a particular issue that may come up, I may say, yes, it is necessary to make the decision tonight. I don't know what you're referring to.
Well, you've seen the agenda, hopefully, and done a little bit of, or at least your office has done a little work.
Well, let me look at the agenda to see what you might be talking about.
I'll give you a hint, J2.
Commissioner Tavaia, I would just like to ask for the next meeting at least to go put those thoughts together.
To put?
The new thought you threw out together.
Okay. Just to be, Madam Chair.
I can, I can tell you that this is something that has to be done tonight. The resolution regarding environmental, environmentally endangered lands.
We're not, we're not there, but you're going to find out that's a factually incorrect statement.
Well, to get it on the ballot.
Again, you're going to find out that's a factually incorrect statement.
Well, I'm just going by what the county attorney told me.
You're going to find out that's a factually incorrect statement.
Okay, whatever.
Madam Chair?
If you, if you're, if you're telling me that this is something that needs to be done, then let's do it tonight. I'm just making the comment.
We're kind of talking in circles here. I have a question, if that's okay, and we've kind of gone back and forth quite a bit.
Absolutely, sorry.
I was always under the impression, at least in the past, and maybe you're not responsible for that, Frank, but in the past, I was told that we didn't need that space back. And I mean, I know we can always spread out, but is this another governmental agency, or is this our agency?
I was asked whether or not there were any internal departments that could use that space, so I made an inquiry at the departments, and two of them responded. One was information technology for a very small space, the other was housing and human services for some of the things that they have ongoing.
I mean, so really, there's no financial benefit to the county to give that space? And is there a need, or is it a want? I mean, I guess that's the question.
Ian's the one who provided that, he gave you more details.
Obviously, providing services to our residents is going to be a priority.
Right.
But at the same time, if all that space isn't needed, maybe a compromise may be the solution. However, you know, with, with just learning this now, I guess.
I understand, Commissioners. With the request from Frank King, we were looking at the additional COVID-related dollars.
That we've gotten as a department. And there's a significant amount that's come in, and so we were actually looking at the potential opening of a satellite office.
Okay.
To allow for the Merritt Island, the beach areas, to have access to staff for different COVID programs, as well as other programs that the department runs.
So, large amount of space, small amount of space?
The, the request, I think it was about fifteen hundred to two thousand square feet. We could do less, but that was contemplating also having kind of a meeting area with a lot of our programs. We were also going to put a veteran service officer up there. They require a enclosed office, not just cubicles, to be able to have conversations with residents and clients regarding specific issues.
Right. Okay.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Will you be, I don't, I'm sorry, I didn't ask you this before, assuming the opioid settlement goes through, will you need additional space, or have you already allocated, will there be addition, obviously, there'll be additional revenue, will there be a need for additional space?
Part of the contemplation for the need for space was because we were looking at bringing on additional people. The opioid dollars were part of that. There's ERA two funds, there are dollars that are coming through our home allocation from ARPA, there's community development block grant CV dollars, our community action agency has CV or coronavirus dollars. So we were looking at adding additional personnel, and we are running out of space in our current facilities.
Thank you.
Commissioner Pritchett?
So Commissioner Tobias, if we could just tighten up how we're going to word this, I, I agree, if the county has to have space, you have my attention. So maybe if we can just come back with, with a tighter one on the very next meeting, and if you're willing to, to put in the other about them going out for bid, because I'm, I'm just protecting that area I have up there in parks, and maybe some other things Ms. Stoner has in parks, I think that would give me great comfort, sir.
If I could, when things go out to bid, it's under a different section of the code, and so it would not apply, the, the proposal by Commissioner Tobias would not apply to those, because they're, they're done under a different section of the code.
So they go out for bid, it's not going to be in conflict with this?
Right, right, this is non-competitive, and so it's specifically those that have not gone out to bid.
Okay.
When we go out for bid, that's under section two dash two four five, and there is a simple majority for that.
Okay, so then they're no longer under non-competitive leases?
Exactly.
As long as they've gone out for bid?
Yes.
Okay?
Okay.
Okay, any further discussion?
Nope, it sounds like the issue's been solved, Madam Chair.
Okay.
Some motion to pass, Madam Chair.
I have a motion by Commissioner Tobias. Do I have a second?
Yeah, I'm on second.
A second by Commissioner Pritchett. And I guess I'll just add that, you know, although, you know, obviously, I have a near and dear place in my heart for BCA, I always have. I mean, I have to look at, you know, services we're providing to our residents, especially if it's for COVID assistance, I, and we need the space, we need the space. So I'm going to support this, and it should be a supermajority anyway, if we're going to do non-competitive. Part of the reason why I rent an office in the middle of my district is because a former commissioner gave a zero-dollar lease to a nonprofit agency, and we have to, as a result, we have to actually rent space. So that's a cost to taxpayers as well. So I, I've been on the other end of that, so I'll support it as well. So I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. All right. Moving on to item J two. I have quite a few cards on this. I placed this item on the agenda, obviously, it's gotten a lot of attention. I did ask the Eels Committee to come and present, because they were, the folks that reached out to me and asked that I bring this forward and, and to the agenda. Obviously, I've met with staff, we've gone over a lot of the properties, a lot of the numbers, and I appreciate your time on this. So I offered the floor to the Eels Committee to present this item. So you want to come up? And since this was an agendized item, I gave Vince extra time, because it was either him or me, and he's the subject matter expert. Although I have some information I'll provide later, but.
Thank you very much, Vince Lamb, South Merritt Island. Of course, we've been working for quite a while to, to get to this point. We have a, a proposed referendum, and, you know, first, a little bit of EAL program history, what the EAL program's about. Since its founding in nineteen ninety-one, the Environmentally Endangered Lands Program has established thirty-two nature sanctuaries, which are conservation lands that protect native plants and wildlife. They also provide many benefits to our community. The, the EAL program sanctuaries particularly protect the Indian River Lagoon and the St. John's River from excess nutrients and other pollutants. In nineteen, in nineteen ninety, and again in two thousand and four, the voters strongly approved the referendums that funded the EAL program and enabled the purchase of twenty-seven, maybe twenty-eight thousand acres of conservation lands. This is a thirty-one year history. So as we entered into this process of a new referendum, we followed the, the pattern that I guess in the nineteen, really, with the nineteen ninety, two thousand and four, and again with the two thousand and sixteen Lagoon referendum, they all started with a, with a poll survey conducted by the Nature Conservancy. So we stuck with that consistently, and the Nature Conservancy actually contracted New Bridge Strategy to perform the survey, which was four hundred residents, four hundred registered voters that represent a good cross-section of the community by, by geography, age, gender, and party affiliation. By the way, New Bridge Strategy was also the one that did the polling for the Lagoon in, in two thousand and sixteen for the Nature Conservancy. So the first thing we did was to get a, a draft ballot language. And, you know, and early in the, in the survey, like the second question or something, was pretty much a shocking, you know, would you vote for this, would you vote for this ballot language, without anything that was preconditioning the, the people to vote one way or the other. There are some very small changes now in the ballot language that the county attorney's office, you know, essentially approved, and, you know, before the survey, and then in the, in the post-survey, there was a need to, to, to ask bond counsel about this, and there were some very small changes made. I don't think there was anything that affects any intent or would have changed the survey in any way. The most important sort of bottom line on this is that, that it has very strong support, with seventy percent of the, of the respondents indicating that they were either strongly or likely to, likely to vote for this measure. The, the primary reason that people want, want to support this is because they want to conserve nature and the environment in Brevard County. The, the survey strongly suggests that Brevard County voters want the opportunity to continue the EAL program and to acquire fifty million dollars in conservation lands, primarily to protect the Lagoon and the St. John's River. I would suggest that in the county with, with six hundred and twenty thousand people and, and growing, it's, more conservation land is needed for the protection of our quality of life. We could, we could, you know, we could be approaching a tipping point with the, with the Lagoon and perhaps the St. John's, where, where we would get a lot of unfavorable publicity, and it, and it could inflict real harm on the, on Brevard County, if we, you know, if we don't keep the, our waters clean. The, the EAL program cannot advocate for its own funding, so a small group of, of private citizens have, have provided the leadership to get to this point. I want to extend thanks to Lauralee Thompson, Keith Winston, Jim Swan, and Bo Platt for their leadership and support. And I want to turn the mic over to, to Bo Platt, and then Lauralee Thompson will speak next.
Okay.
Hi, I'm Bo Platt, resident of Melbourne, Florida, and I'm on the Procedures Committee for the Environmentally Endangered Lands Program. Just real briefly, some of the benefits. We restore and protect the habitat for native plants, animals, and marine life, provide land and water-based ecotourism and recreation for our residents. We educate the public to foster more sustainable practices. We recharge cleaner water into our impaired Florida aquifer. We protect and restore the St. John's River and the Indian River Lagoon. We enable the development by providing for mitigation lands. And finally, we reduce the risk of damaging wildfires, as you've seen, can be quite devastating. The cost, a study by the county in two thousand and twenty showed a return of almost five dollars for every dollar invested in the Environmentally Endangered Lands Program. So it's a great investment. Putting aside any kind of interest in recreation or conservation or nature, just a financial return makes sense. And it's a modest investment. I've got my property tax statement here. My house is assessed at about four hundred thousand dollars, and I pay about eighty cents a week to support the Eels Program. So Brevard voters have voted overwhelmingly on two occasions, fourteen years apart, to invest in the Eels Program, and I just ask that you allow the voters to vote again. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have more on the presentation, Lauralee? Is this about the presentation, or is this public comment?
This is public comment.
Okay. You can come on up.
Hi, I'm Lauralee Thompson, thirty-five fifty Irwin Avenue, MEMS. And so, something near and dear to my heart, the Indian River Lagoon provides nursery areas for at least seventy percent of Florida's important recreational and commercial fisheries. Many of Florida's marine fisheries could disappear without healthy coastal environments, and we all know how much of the Indian River Lagoon takes up for the east coast of Florida. Our EAL lands are critically important for Indian River Lagoon restoration. In order to make an impact, we need big areas with lagoon frontage and submerged land, so we can do seagrass planting, clam and oyster restoration, and revive natural shorelines. The EAL program currently manages more than thirty-seven miles of shoreline along the Indian River Lagoon and its major tributaries. That doesn't include small outflows and ditch systems that are within the EAL properties. In the central and south end of the county, Coconut Point, Maritime Hammock, Thousand Islands, and Pine Island are prime locations for oyster restoration, seagrass, and clam planting projects. Pine Island itself has multiple facets of IRL restoration projects, including stormwater reservoirs, restored salt marsh impoundments, and mangrove forests. Seagrass and clam projects are planned for Pine Island. The Brevard Zoo's largest living shoreline project is taking place at Coconut Point and Maritime Hammock Sanctuaries. Our own Brevard County Natural Resources Management Office is working to get permits for a half a million dollar seagrass planting project that's adjacent to the Coconut Point Sanctuary. Guys, you cannot do these kind of large-scale restoration projects in people's front yards on little lots where they've hard-armed their shoreline with rocks and, and seawalls. You have to have some bigger properties. And, and so, even, and in the north end of the lagoon, we have large amounts of properties that are still, have the opportunity for land acquisition up there. And the north end of the lagoon, it has even more trouble than the south end of the lagoon, because the residency time for water circulation is over a year up there. We need help up there. So the folks in Brevard County, they want the chance to be able to vote on this referendum. Please give them that opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you, Lauralee. Jack Ratterman? And after Jack, Tom Unwrath?
Good evening. My name's Jack Ratterman. I'm North Merritt Island, and I'm here to try to convince the commission that this should be on the ballot, that by putting it on the ballot, then it takes it off your plate. If something goes wrong, then you're not responsible for it. Should be the counties, or the citizens of the county, to decide. And what's wrong with deciding on this? Eels is part of the oldest house in Brevard County, the Sam's House. It also is part of the oldest, still existing Indian mound up there, and it does many other things for the county. When you come to Brevard County, you know, the, the tourists are only going to come for so long for the NASA, and then it's the environmental effort that, that's going to sustain us. So tonight, I strongly urge you, let's put this on the ballot in November. Thank you.
Tom Unwrath, and then Tammy Daboo?
Good evening. Thanks for the opportunity to, to speak. My name is Tom Unwrath. I live at eleven seventy Idaho A in Springs, Missouri. I'm a pastor. I served as a military chaplain for twenty-two years, and I've been doing this business for forty-five total. And I'm coming here to talk about it in really a little bit more of a theological way. As a Christian, my belief is, and I've heard many other people claim that they are also Christians, so I'll take that as, as their word, I believe that God has given us this world in which we live, and said, okay, you got it, now go take care of it. And when God created it, said, it's good, keep it that way. So I, I believe that the Eels Program is a step to help us to do that as a community. It's not just an individual thing, but, but we, together, as a county, as individual communities, have the opportunity to work together to, to keep this place, and as a, as a beautiful place as God has given it to us. It's also likely that there may be some monetary discussion, you know, that this is going to cost a mon, money, and it's going to be on a taxes, already heard about the property taxes and so on. It just happens that this coming Sunday, for many of us, one of the lessons is going to be where Jesus says, put your treasures in heaven, not here on earth, because here on earth, it's, it's corruptible. And I think finding a way to help keep it from being corrupted, as we work together, as the EAL program does, allows us, in a, in a different way, in a very valuable way, to say, you know what, I'm taking care of this, not just for me individually, but for us as a community, and for us, because that's one of the things that God has asked us to do. Thank you very much.
Tammy? And after Tammy, we'll have Keith.
Good evening, Commissioners. Thank you for your time tonight. My name is Tammy Daboo. I am the Brevard County Environmentally Endangered Lands Selection and Management Committee Chairperson. So I'm here before you. I was instructed, after writing my letter to you all to consider this, I'm respectfully requesting that you all put this Brevard County Environmentally Endangered Lands Program referendum on the November eighth, two thousand and twenty-two ballot for the voters to consider. I think this is. I think this is a large enough endeavor for the voters to consider. I don't think a mere four people, um, within the whole Brevard County is the right place. I think it would be, uh, very wise for us to have the voters who have overwhelmingly twice approved this Brevard County Environmentally Endangered Lands Program to exist. We exist successfully. We're doing fire management. We're doing protected species management. We're a premier county as a result of these actions that our staff in Brevard County work hard day in and day out to dedicate, to ensure the protection of these twenty-eight thousand acres for everyone's enjoyment today, tomorrow, and sustainment in the future. So I encourage you all to take note of that, that what do we want Brevard County to look like? Do we want it to be sustainable? Do we want it to be a county where people continue to strive to come to and to live and enjoy, tourists and residents alike? So I kindly and respectfully request that you approve overwhelmingly placing this referendum on the November eighth, twenty-two agenda. Thank you. Ballot.
Keith Winston. And after Keith, Diane Stees? You look mildly familiar.
Thank you, Commissioners. I mean, everything has been said beautifully before me here. I just want to talk about the economics of this for one minute. Every time we actually value nature, we come up with different measures for it. But I think the quality of life measures that you see every day, you can actually read in the newspaper every day here, um, development's always going to happen. We want to do it wisely, and we want to balance those things in the hands of private citizens with what government can do to balance that out. As you know, there is a slight increase in, as it's currently phrased, I believe, from point-one-two mils to point-one-four mils. To give you an idea of what that comes to for a three-hundred-thousand-dollar house, that's about six dollars a year. Um, I took my daughter shopping to the mall this weekend. Most of the lunch meals were in the twelve to fourteen-dollar range. So we're, we're talking about a raise of one Starbucks coffee or half a meal at the mall, and look at all the rewards we get. And I just look at the conversations you have with people all the time, right? We want to balance the economic development here, which is so strong, with the things that brought us here in the first place. So this has been a very successful program, modeled after, we've been the model for many other counties to do it. We've done it successfully twice. We want to give people a chance to weigh in again, and I really urge you to put it on the ballot exactly as it's currently phrased. It's been basically run through the county attorneys. We know it works. It's been firmly vetted, and this can continue our success. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Diane Stees? And after Diane, Jim Burney?
Commissioners, Diane Stees, Cocoa Beach. I wasn't planning on speaking tonight, but my district, D2, is not represented, so here I am. First, I want to recognize those who had the vision and drive to preserve the best of Brevard's natural habitats and wildlife with a science-based program. There have been hundreds of volunteers who have spent thousands of hours over the past thirty years to ensure the integrity and success of our Eel Program. By the way, I've been a volunteer since nineteen eighty-nine, so I'm one of them. Um, please remember to thank or just appreciate all those volunteers. Please see through the dissenting opinion that you, we may sit through tonight, I'm not sure. Eels has always had its detractors, but know that there is widespread support for the Eel Program. Conservation lands work, some examples, and you've heard them before, but I'm going to say them again because I want to make sure everybody understands this. They help not hurt water quality in the Indian River Lagoon. Some of these lands are aquifer recharge areas. Eel lands managed through prescribed burns protect adjacent neighborhoods from wildfire. And by the way, they raise property values. Lastly, please let the voters of Brevard decide the next chapter of the Eel Program. Thank you.
Thank you. Jim Burney? And after Jim, Barbara Goran?
I'm Jim Burney. I'm a resident of Rockledge, Florida. Um, and as a Rockledge resident, I'm here to support the resolution to pass a referendum as it's, as it's written, the Environmentally Endangered Land and Water Areas Bond Referendum to supplant the, um, the current sunsetting bond, bond referendum. Um, I'm also fully wanting to, to support the, the referendum as the original language caption and as the language reads currently, um, to really fully express the intent and the spirit of the, of the language. Um, I support adding the referendum to the twenty-two ballot for the following reasons. Uh, firstly, the twenty-two, twenty-twenty-two bond referendum will continue the job started by the first two. This includes, uh, completing the, the protections of the complex parcels known as the mega parcels in the south end and the north end of the counties. And more importantly, or just as importantly, it'll continue the land and waterways management. As a owner of a vegetation management company that provides a base of plant services to conservation lands, I can provide ample data that deferred costs compound daily. If you pause a program, stop a program, interrupt a program, it will cost. Plants are going to grow. The, the cost compound. Secondly, though, I believe that the referendum complements other programs and objectives, such as the Save Our Lagoon programs, um, as well as upland programs for endangered species. Upland species, they complement the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service parcels, it's a FWC parcels, in response to scrub jays and other upland species, so it's not just lagoon-related. Um, and they also, I believe this program complements the Tourist Development Council's objectives of, uh, increased tourism within the county. I think they dovetail in together, actually. The referendum also offers, uh, to me, the referendum offers tourism and ecological values that may offset the potential loss to tax revenue as well as other county expenses. There's prob- there's been studies, um, yes, excuse me, um, University of Florida IFAS has done financial, um, investigations to the, as well as U.S. Fish and Wildlife, Nature Conservancy. There's many studies out there that will demonstrate the value in dollars and cents to, um, to, um, kind of support that claim. Obviously, the referendum polling, was it seventy percent? So that's basically seventy percent of the, of the polling still continued, support continued buying development rights. That's really what you're doing. You're buying development rights from lands, right? So at the beginning of it, it's got, it's a certain value minus the conservation, I mean, excuse me, minus development rights equals the conservation value, which is so much less than the original value. Um, but lastly, I'm running out of time, but lastly, really conserving land and waters for the public needs to call a benefit is a responsible position. It's been a position taken by the feds, by the state, and by the formal councils of Brevard County. So I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Barbara Goran? And after Barbara, William Haskell?
I'd like to make a comment. We can't hear very well back here. It's very, uh, hard to hear everybody, and I'm going to have to go home and listen to this on the TV in order to hear some of this verbiage.
Ian, are you able to hear us from where you're sitting? I only ask because he's staffed. Jill, can you hear us okay? And they're at the back of the room. I'm not sure.
I mean, this gentleman just spoke, and I couldn't hear a lot of what he was saying, as well as one of the women. And it's not just this segment. It was earlier.
We can ask people to speak louder.
And I hope I'm speaking loud enough.
You can pull the mic closer to him.
Can you hear me now? Because they couldn't hear earlier. Thank you. I have a problem with this, with the Eels being put on the ballot. I appreciate what they're doing, what Eels does, I really do, and it's necessary, but right now is not the time to do it, to add more money for taxes. It's a tax, and, um, it's just not, I don't think it's appropriate. I'd like to fi- ask a question. Where was Eels and where does Eels stand when the commission is voting to put a hotel in, or has voted to put a hotel in? And the land that was around the hotel, I'm talking about the view, the birds, the turtles, the seagrass, where does all this, how does all this work together? Are you all working together? Does the Eels, do the Eels people support what's going on when these hotels are going up and destroying the, um, the lands around there and what's going into the, the lagoon? I just really would like to know where they were. I don't recall seeing any of that, any input from Eels on that. But I'm just really frustrated when there's one after another after another tax that is put on the citizens here in Brevard County. And I, I'm not against Eels. I'm just against this inflationary time, recession time. People are going to be losing their homes, and this is not something that needs to be put on the ballot now. It's time to cut back and stop. So that is my two cents worth, three minutes worth. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gar. All right. William Haskell? And after William Haskell, Martha Pissaro?
Well, thank you for the opportunity. I never hear. I, uh, concur with a lot of what Ms. Gar had to say, and I'd like to ask if I could just hold this up and let you look at it. This, uh, this graph was prepared by Scott Ellis, and, uh, I would like you to see, uh, what it recognized. There's a comment that those don't learn from history are doomed to repeat it. And what this, uh, chart is, which I'd also like the audience to see, shows what happened between nineteen ninety-nine and two thousand and nine, when some previous members of our, uh, county commission.
Mr. Haskell, if you don't speak in the mic, they might not be able to hear you.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, ma'am.
That's okay.
So the point is that this, uh, chart, uh, this chart here is, uh, shows what happens when you have, uh, independent, uh, variables of, uh, population, inflation, and income per, per capita going up at a certain rate, and when the budget by the county commission in those years was so far high that they thought it was going into space and it would stay there. And the problem I have, I agree with you that we need to deal with, uh, we need to protect our environment, clean water and clean air and all that, and everything that Barbara said, but I also agree that you, I don't think you are looking at some things. You should be looking at what economists are saying today. I, I'm a student of the business, and with these, with this kind of economy now, we're facing some very dire times. I'm glad that a thousand people have been coming to Florida every day, according to the governor. I'm also very happy about the prosperity, even though we have higher traffic. But what I am not happy about is the fact that, uh, the, who's going to be paying for all this impact fees, impact, uh, on the six hundred thousand ci- citizens as far as all this new development is concerned? I'm also, having checked with the Florida Department of Law Enforcement, both in Tallahassee and in Orlando operational area, there is no concern at all about the illegal, uh, immigrants coming to this Florida. And Florida is the number one of five, leaving out Texas and California, the number one where illegals are coming in right to work, warm weather, people who speak Spanish, and a huge demand from all those people coming into the state means that we're going to have to pay for new schools, hospitals, nursing homes, jails, prisons, libraries, infrastructure, and people in them. And those are going to be taxes that we're going to have, and we're heading for a downturn now in the next two and a half years of this administration. So I hope you think about those things. And finally, one of the gentlemen said that there's a five-to-one return. Well, we know that the wealthy organizations like the Sierra Club, they have a lot of super wealthy people, so if you can make five dollars for every one dollar invested, then why aren't they doing it? And I'd like to know what the total numbers are in that resolution. I don't see any numbers as far as the bonding or whatever. I, somebody told me back there what it, what it was. But I hope, I want to thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Haskell. Martha, did you want to talk now? Commissioner Tavaia, or is this?
No. That's me, I'm not, but thank you.
Martha Pissaro? And after Martha, Paul Rubin?
Hi, everybody. I'm Martha Pissaro from Merritt Island. And back to the J-two resolution, calling for a referendum. Let's continue what history has proven is socially, economically, environmentally, and educationally perfect for Brevard County, for its citizenry, for its lands, for its water, for its quality of life. This referendum isn't going to be changing our tax in any amount that we see other than what's associated to our property taxes. I think mine right now, um, if I look at what we're paying to the two pieces, it probably equals, um, something like a McDonald's Happy Meal. It's that small. It's that tiny fraction of what I pay in property taxes. But let's talk about the program, why the Environmentally Endangered Lands Program is important to Brevard County and to our future. This is our destiny. We have spent years, three decades right now that I've been involved, where we have been educating our citizenry. As a, a dream job, I was able to do an educational portion of the work for the Eel Program at the Sam's House, and those eight years were part of the most perfect years that I had in making an impact into children's lives with our curriculum-based programs. And we had children from every walk of life coming in. Some of them had never been outside before. The programs they were visiting with us were things they would not experience in a classroom. We could only do that on Environmentally Endangered Lands Programs. We have three different education and management centers. The north is our Enchanted Forest. That's the flagship. The central region is the Sam's House, and down in the south, we have the Barrier Island Center. All of the children who come through, all of the families who come through are impacted, all of the visitors who come through are impacted. Through this COVID timeframe, we had trails open. People could hike with their families. Visitation increased, not decreased. We had a huge impact on the health and well-being of everyone within this county. I won't even go into talking about endangered species that we're working with, but realize we do conservation projects everywhere, and this is one of the programs you just can't turn off. Turning it off would not do any good for anyone. Ridding lands would not do any good for anyone. We need more of this conservation. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Timed that perfectly. Paul Rubin?
Thanks for having me here. I'm representing an entire generation of, uh, of millennials. I think we're all at work most of the time, and so you don't see that generation represented too well. Uh, I'm also representing my daughter, who you may or may not have heard up there. Uh, it was not easy for us to get here because we do work full-time, and I just want you all to know that we spend, my wife and I, and all of our friends, we spend a lot of time at these parks to recreate, to enjoy our family, and I am a local here. I grew up here. These lands affected myself in that I'm an environmental scientist. Uh, they inspired me to conserve and live a sustainable life, and I really think without them, without these lands, uh, I myself would be a very different person, and I really want that for my daughter. I want her to be able to experience, just like we all have. I'm sure everyone here has been to at least one of these parks. I spend almost every weekend walking Maritime Hammock. Uh, we, we go hiking in Enchanted Forest. We go surfing. We, we, without these parks, Brevard is not as beautiful as it was before them. I can't imagine going down these areas and seeing another car wash, or seeing a fast-food chain, or seeing a parking lot. I couldn't, I just couldn't imagine this county going in that direction, and somebody mentioned, you know, we learn from history, and in the past, we used to develop over burial grounds for Native Americans. We used to knock over shell mounds and midends and turn them into roads. We don't have many left, and I don't think many people even know much about the history. To get rid of what we have left, that would- To get rid of what we have left, that would be truly terrible. And again, I want to have that experience for me as I age, for my daughter, for my friends and their families. And I just hope you all realize that when you vote, that this is a big deal, and we really need these lands. It's a bare minimum. And without these lands, we're not going to be able to conserve what we have left of the Indian River Lagoon either and protect it. So consider that when you vote. And I think we need more. We would love more. We want to see a beautiful Brevard. And without these lands, we won't be able to, to do that. So I just want to thank you for the opportunity to talk. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. That's it. Commissioner Tavaia, you ready for the show? I've seen the slides, that's why I asked.
First of all, I want to, um, thank the chair for bringing this forward. I always appreciate when we have the opportunity for lively discussions. I want to, before, however, as a board, we make a decision that will have an impact on taxing our citizens to the tune of more than $50 million. I think there's some important questions that we need to ask and at least get answers to. And for everyone that's shown up, I greatly appreciate your passion. Um, it's extremely evident. What I'm going to attempt to do is a little bit different, and that is use logic and scientific-based decision-making. Um, and I ask that the board keeps an open mind, uh, on this. But, uh, I'd like to start, and I've handed this out, I've put it up here for the benefit of everyone else. I think we should know, there are about 28,000 acres in Brevard County, 28,048 acres. About 95% of that has come through, uh, acquisition. About 31% was transferred to the state. A quarter of that was not transferred to the state, and we'll find out why just a little bit later. And almost 40% of it was not eligible for transfer for the state. Again, you'll find out why. 3.6 came through mitigation, and about 2% came, came through, uh, other donations. So the question, I think, that we first have, have to ask ourselves here is what are our legal responsibilities? So I looked up the lease, and I looked up the lease in perspective of, um, in perspective of the land that was transferred to the state. And I have it up here. This is directly taken off. I highlighted a, a portion up there. It says, "In the event no further use of the land leased, uh, or any part thereof is needed, the leasing shall give written notification to the Bureau of Public Lands and Administration," then the address follows, "at least six months prior to the lease." So the first question we have to get to is, what is our legal obligation? We absolutely do. Again, we have transferred 8,920 acres. Um, and thank, thank, uh, Mr. Knight has, had told us it costs about $129 an acre to manage. That means per annum, we have a responsibility of $1,150,680. Of course, six months is half of a year. Therefore, our legal responsibility, our legal obligation is $575,340. Again, our legal obligation is just over a half million dollars. So the second question, I think, that is extremely important in answering is, should we be purchasing land? We have land, but 28,000-plus acres, should we buy more? And I'm going to give some reasons. I think probably it's in the wrong direction. Number one, uh, Eels grows without the purchase of land. We have gained more than 1,000 acres through mitigation and almost 600 acres through donation. So this program grows without us funding, uh, the purchase of that. Second, and this is extremely, extremely, extremely important here, purchasing land keeps money off the tax rolls. We wanted to look at this from an economic perspective, so I think that's extremely important. And before we look at the initial cost, I think we need to look at a reoccurring cost. And I want to thank, um, Director Ted Cawkins for helping, uh, with some of these calculations. And by the way, I just took one parcel of land. Yes, it was the largest parcel of land, but I just took one parcel of land that was taken off the rolls, uh, from Eels. And you can see all that up there. It's Fox, uh, Fox Lake Sanctuary. Uh, we purchased, uh, 2,568 acres. Now, a, a large portion of that is wetland, so it would not be able to be, uh, developed. Uh, but just over 1,000 acres is developable. Now, if you use the current zoning class, you don't make any changes, just the surrounding zoning, which is, we don't even have to make that determination up here, but, but if you use that, uh, that would give you, in the neighborhood of about 416 units. Now, there has to be roads and infrastructure, so the calculation I got was between 20 and 30. I took the more conservative and removed 30% off of that. And our tax collector is, um, extremely good about going into the computer and being able to estimate, uh, what the calculations, uh, of taxes would be. Just this one property in reoccurring, lost tax revenue is more than $1.7 million. It's reoccurring, $1.7 million. I'm not talking about, um, the jobs that are lost from lack of building homes. Um, I'm not talking about all the ancillary benefits that come with folks. I'm talking about reoccurring, and we'll get there a little bit later. But there is an individual cost as well, as you all know, and was mentioned up here. We have something called the impact fee. So when you build a house, there's an impact on Brevard County, and you have to pay a little more than, uh, $9,000. So this is a one-time cost. This isn't a cost lost, um, by developers. This is a cost lost by, uh, the county. And, and let me tell you where these would otherwise go, because this is almost $3 million. Transportation, you hear about roads, we'd lose 1. almost $3 million. Fire rescue, uh, that one's 15,000. EMS, 11,000. Correctional facility, 21,000. Our, our precious libraries, 19,000. Solid waste, uh, 46 and change. Education, 1.5 million. This is one parcel of land that was purchased last time, and, and we're thinking about purchasing many times this. The total impact fee was almost $3 million. So when we make these decisions, um, I think it's extremely, extremely important that we look at this from a financial perspective. And I appreciate passion, but unfortunately, th- these are decisions that we have to make. So, um, we have reoccurring, we have one-time loss. Let me tell you why, um, purchasing this is a bad financial decision. And this is the next slide up here, please. I looked at some purchases that we made, and then I looked at what we paid for them, and I looked at what the property appraiser has them appraised for. And you can see they're really wise investments. We purchased Fox Lake Sanctuary, $25 million. And it has, according to the property appraiser right now, you can go online, look, look, as of, as of a couple days ago, $886,000. I think this is worse than Bitcoin. Uh, Indian Mound, uh, we purchased for 3.5 million. It is worth about $500,000 today. Uh, I reminded what, um, and it was mentioned up here, uh, Scott Ellis said, um, Scott Ellis, former comptroller and forever conservative, uh, just because 70% of people voted for it doesn't mean you have to overpay, which we clearly did here. He also said, "You have a fiduciary duty to the citizens of Brevard County to spend money wisely when it's been appropriated by referendum, and has, and has not done so on the Eels purchase." I think he was extremely prophetic when we look at what happens there. Let me give you a fourth reason why we should not be doing this. Because there is a lack of communication with the parent company here, for lack of better term, that's the state of Florida. And I want to thank Mr. Knight for pointing this out. But the state has instructed us to cease requesting reimbursements. The former plan was you find great land, uh, you purchase it, and the state reimburses you for half. State's not interested in doing that, uh, anymore. Efforts were renewed, uh, but the state indicated that our land wasn't eligible. It begs the question, why isn't our land eligible? We'll get there a little bit later, I think, uh, when we define what actually is Eels. And you'll find out that there's no scientific determination. But, uh, phone contact with the state has been, uh, proved unsuccessful, and formal written request is, has yet to be submitted. So the state doesn't even want to participate with us, uh, in this program. And this just came to light, and this is very, very disturbing, uh, to me. When we look at purchasing, uh, land, the selection committee has already indicated what land they want to purchase, which from a negotiating standpoint probably isn't that smart. But I went ahead and looked at it. More than 600 acres, or almost $2 million, uh, that has been earmarked, was earmarked for a company that has hired a lobbyist that has come for us. So this is so lucrative, the companies are hiring lobbyists. Right, and this lobbyist actually registered, uh, on, we'll get there a little bit later, but actually registered. Another parcel, now this is the one that really shocked me and, and greatly disturbed me, in all honesty, and this is ones that we are going to purchase. Um, and, and I, again, I, I appreciated everyone's passion, but foresight would have been helpful. Another parcel to purchase would go to a former elected official. So not only are lobbyists benefiting this, former elected officials will be, uh, benefiting from these land purchases. And all this stuff is in the data that has been provided, and, um, all commissioners have access to. So for those five reasons, I don't think purchasing land, um, is probably, and none of them are political, um, but I just don't think they're wise. So it gets us to the third part. What is, what is the solution here? And I think it's three phases. Number one, not to go into debt and bond money for operational expenses. Number two, find an alternative funding source for the 1.150 million. That's the 800, 8,920 acres times $129 an acre. Whether you want to do that in perpetuity, or whether you want to meet our minimum obligation, there needs to be a funding source. So these lands that we have purchased, that when they did come up, I didn't vote for, but I think it is our responsibility to maintain. Um, and, and, and finally, and most importantly, not purchase any more land. So how do we do this? Well, I'm going to give you, um, three or four sources, uh, of, of funds. I've, I've spent some time with this. Number one is tourist development tax. It has already been mentioned here. But the Eels has three nature centers, the Enchanted Forest, Sam's House, and Barrier Island. These buildings cost 593,000 and change annually to run. We can use TDT funds of the first and second penny designated for capital facilities programs. Florida statute, uh, 125 says, and I quote, "In addition to those programs allowed pursuant to paragraph to acquire, construct, extend and enlarge, remodel, repair, improve, maintain, operate, and promote one or more zoological parks, fishing piers, or nature centers." So we do have a funding source right now where we can take care of the nature centers without having additional tax burden on our citizens. Number two, and this one you may not find positive, but I want to put out there, we have the ability to sell land that has not been deeded over to the state and use the proceeds to manage the land that we currently have. I don't understand why we would go out and purchase more land when we're not taking care of the land that we currently have. Now, I'm not going to say we've, we, we spent $35 million worth of land, as I've showed up here, it's, it's, it's not worth $35 million, but it is worth, uh, a great deal of money. But to put that in perspective, if we were only to take, oh, take part of the land that we did not deed over, that's about 7,000 acres, um, and the part that we did manage at $129 an acre, we would have reoccurring resources of $913,000. In other words, if we only sold a portion, we would have plenty to manage the bulk. That's less than a quarter. To be very clear, there would be no loss of jobs for county employees, as there are still 68 vacant vacancies in parks. And again, let me be very clear, because bond language was clear, uh, proceeds would not be used for, uh, other areas. They would be used for the maintaining and the improving of existing land. Let me give you a, a third one, and I don't know whether or not this is a possibility, because in all honesty, when you're, uh, making poor purchases that the state is not recognizing, um, but assume the state went back, um, we have $35 million of investment that the state has not yet reimbursed us for. So we could ask them for the 10th, 11th, 12th time to reimburse us for half as they did for the good purchases. Unfortunately, that wasn't very much, but the good purchases we made. They have not reimbursed us for $35 million. In other words, we made a lot of bad purchases by the folks that really know what they're doing. So what is the conclusion here? I hope that we get off this temporary sugar high that we're on, because there are a lot of friendly liberal environmentalists out here. And you have a great deal of passion, and, and I really appreciate that. But what we have to do is look at what we are going to leave future commissions. Look at the environment. I tell you what we're going to leave future commissions, through no fault of our own, but through involve, fault of the environment. We have hyperinflation coming, okay? It's, it's here, and it appears as though it is only getting worse. We've made some tough votes, but we still have infrastructure needs. Soral, at some point, that's going to go away. We are going to lose a huge funding source. The sheriff, I, I don't know how he did it. I don't know that, that miracle that he pulled at the 11th hour by finding an extra 1.7 or negotiating an, an extra $1.7 million out of his budget. But that's going to come back next time. Not next time, next year. We're going to see that. We're going to have less construction dollars. We, I all know, we have these new construction dollars that sometime the economy's going to turn down. And we've been living fat off federal government stimulus plans. $20 million here, $60 million here. I mean, we got so much, we each had a piggy bank of $5 million to spend. At some point, that goes away. And, and an example we have that I remember is we were, we were handcuffed with bond payments for a $5 million Savannah's golf course that was barely playable, yet we had to make, um, accommodations for what I would argue is a poor decision made by, by, uh, previous commissions. So what you heard about Eels, environmentally endangered land, I, when I first heard about it, I went on, online and I Googled it. What is an environmentally endangered land? And the answer is, there's no scientific measure. This is a term that was made up to elicit passion, and it has. There is absolutely nothing that says that's environmentally endangered land, and that is not. And it's not me saying this, it's not Google saying this, it's the state of Florida and the federal government that have not yet defined, nor because there is no definition, it is language in a ballot to insture, en- ensure that there's a great deal of passion. What you would have heard, but you didn't, was with sorrel funds, I did not vote for sorrel funds in full disclosure, however, I take those resources extremely seriously. I think this entire board does. Before we make a decision, we go through a lengthy process, and we determine per dollar how many pounds of nitrogen and how many pounds of phosphorus will be removed or kept out of the lagoon. We haven't heard that once. We heard it's great for the lagoon. We heard, what we did not hear was how many pounds of nitrogen or phosphorus. Our measure for determining how to spend a limited resource. So the reason there is no measure is because it probably doesn't have the impact that, uh, we're led to believe. And it's wonderful, God wants us to vote for this. But what I keep on But what I keep on thinking about is affordable housing. And I'm not all that bright when it comes to economics, but I know when supply decreases, generally prices increase. And the more you remove developable land, developable land, off of the rolls, the less housing you have. The less housing you have, the more prices go up, the more we exacerbate the problem of affordable housing, because environmentalism is a rich man's game. And yes, it's wonderful that you guys can afford a Starbucks coffee, and please don't take your daughter to eat at the mall. I can't imagine worse food than mall food. But either way, there are families that are struggling, and that things are going to get worse, that don't have the same luxuries that we do. So I looked at what some other folks had, and the concept, this was according to the chairman of the RPOF in 2017, "The concept of government taking land from private landowners should send a shiver up the spine of anyone who calls themselves a small government conservative. Land buying is popular in liberal states like California and New York, but should not be in Florida." That was Leslie Dugger. And the Pew Charitable Trust, I thought this was interesting, I didn't know about this, since I don't follow national politics all that much. "Environmental groups and lawmakers are placing an increased focus on land, private land, through national conservation strategies." There's actually a campaign, it's called the 30-30 Campaign, which has been adopted by the Biden administration and aims to conserve 30% of U.S. lands and waters by 2030. We are doing that up here. So I'm going to make one plea, and here it is. Guys, we had the opportunity to cut a tax. Now, I'd love to be doing this all the time, but we have obligations, and we have responsibilities, and we've made tough votes when it comes to infrastructure, whether it be sewer, septic, water, and roads, and we haven't had that luxury. Today, we have that luxury. Because you hear about, you know, it's 80 cents, or it's a cup of Starbucks, let me tell you what it is. It's 7.95 million tax dollars that were paid last year because of this. Yes, a responsibility, but we have the ability to absolutely say no to this. And I'll be the first, I just need one other person to say that this is not the right time. And if you guys do decide it's the right time and go in a different direction, I do have some issues with the ballot language itself, but if there's another person...
So you don't want to support it, but you want to change the ballot language and then vote no on it anyway? Is that what you're asking, the board?
Madam Chair?
Yes. I'm just curious.
So the ballot language is not fair. The ballot language is not true. Yes, it may meet bottom counsel, but I have language that is much more clear. Those individuals are trying to...
I don't think anybody else has seen the language.
What, Madam Chair?
I don't know that everybody else has seen the language.
And I'm more than willing to hand that out, but we haven't even put up the other language here. We heard a poll, but, which I didn't vote for, I don't legislate by polls, and it's wonderful that you may have it, but I don't know what the N was, I don't know what the standard deviation was, I don't know when it was collected, or through what method it was collected. I don't know what precursor questions were asked. It's one of the few things I'm actually somewhat decent at, and I know when I don't get any cross tabs, or even are presented with the data, it's a BS poll. And even if it was a good poll, as a policymaker, that's, I don't think, the right way to legislate. And I appreciate that you went out there and did it, because you put your money where your thoughts were, and that's absolutely wonderful. I wish you'd have just done it in a little bit more constructive way. So if you want accurate polling language, or accurate referendum language, I'm more than willing to offer that up, but I certainly hope someone says, you know what, it's not conservative to buy more land, it's not conservative to tax people, and here we have a way to do around that. So no, I don't want to offer my changes, because I certainly hope someone makes good on the promises that many of us made when we got elected, that we were going to do our best to hold government spending in check. And I'll get into more if you want, but prices are all time high right now. And not only that, we're talking about bonding, and bonding is scary right now. Let me tell you, this isn't me, I just wanted to know from our county financial advisor, have bond prices changed? They're up more than 50%. So we'd be borrowing land, they're up more than 50% from January of this year. So I have no idea what they're going to be, but I'll tell you right now, the Fed just raised, what, 75 basis points? And it looks like they're probably going to do it again. So God forbid, when we did bond this money, not only would we be paying a premium for the land, some politicians may appreciate that, some lobbyists may appreciate that, but I don't think taxpayers probably would. So yeah, there was a lot to go over here, but again, this is $50 million, and once this is stretched out over the time period, this is quite a bit more. So, Madam Chair, I really appreciate your indulgence on this, but I would more appreciate your support. Commissioner Smith mentioned, and we'll get to a little bit later, this does not need to be on the ballot. We have the ability to say no. And we also have the ability to change our minds, because this doesn't run out yet. Always go figure, government. Spend the money before it even runs out. We've done it before, we'd be doing it again. We would have the ability to put this in the ballot next year, in 2023, and there would be no loss of revenue. So A, it doesn't ever need to be on the ballot, and B, it doesn't need to be on the ballot this year. I never want to see it on the ballot, but it's a misnomer to say that it needs to be on the ballot this year. So, Madam Chair, I'm open to questions. I just hope that we make a logical, science, math-driven decision on this, and not a passionate one, because we've got some passionate people out here, and I greatly appreciate it. And if you guys win, more power to you, it just goes to show how effective showing up and voicing your opinion is. Thank you, Madam Chair.
And that's not always true. We just had a bunch of sex offenders who called themselves registered citizens, who we said no to. But anyway, could you put up Commissioner Tobias' slides? Again, I want to have a little fun, just for a second, if you'll just indulge me.
I got one more slide, too.
Oh, gosh. The slide that nobody got?
Yeah, yeah, but I did that for a reason. Can we put up the fifth slide?
Oh, Jesus.
So what I did is I hit a little eel somewhere in each one. You know, because it's eel, and I called them Lucky, the leprechaun eel, because you could call this land leprechaun land, because there's no designation for environmentally endangered, so I prefer to call this leprechaun land. I should, I guess, put a leprechaun up, but, you know, I did not. But yeah, whatever, if you want to go over the ballot language, I'd be more than willing to do that one, and I'd be more than willing to pass out the eel, so you can play this game at home. I circled it, cheated.
I have it in my...
He doesn't look very happy.
All right, can we put up the third slide of Commissioner Tobias' presentation? Can you look at the fourth bullet point? And I just have to point this out because of the extreme nature of somebody's spelling error in one of their presentations to the board, and I think it's funny that you spelt infrastructure incorrectly. So maybe that's a board joke, if you didn't see our meeting with the Westin. But did you do these slides, or did you fail to...
I tell you what, I still don't see the spelling error, but my spelling stinks.
Infrastructure?
S-T-U-R.
Oh, I wouldn't have caught that in a million years. It wasn't...
Infrastructure is a new word.
Okay, so I won't ask for $30 million, Madam Chair.
What I'm saying now is, you know...
Yeah, my spelling is not perfect, but I didn't come to the board and ask for $30 million. So it's a little bit of a difference.
But you'd berate that guy pretty hard for making a spelling error in a slide.
He spelled his company's name wrong, so when I spell John Tobias wrong, I deserve to be lambasted, Madam Chair.
Okay. And the next slide, for the purchase versus current value?
Did I misspell something, too?
No, I didn't scale it. That was just something that I saw right away with that slide, when you sent them to me today. Anyway, it talks about, you talked about the Fox Sanctuary and the purchase of $25 million in today's value being, you know, $886,000. I mean, that's because it's vacant land. I mean, it wouldn't have a commercial value, and I think it's sort of misleading, because if it had a commercial value, the value would be a lot more.
So Madam Chair, when we purchased it, it wasn't vacant land?
But I believe, wasn't it zone commercial?
Madam Chair, it was vacant land when we purchased it. It's still vacant land. There's no change. There wasn't Universal Studios on there, there wasn't homes on there. The point is that it's untouched.
Right. But it's Brevard County vacant land.
No, the point is, on this slide, we purchased it for $25 million. This isn't my valuation on it, by the way. This is the Brevard County Property Appraiser. She'd more than willing...
And it was the commission that voted on those purchases? Like, we would vote on every purchase, should...
I did not, Madam Chair.
I didn't either. I wasn't here.
I'm just pointing out that we have a history of bad decision-making. This board does.
Okay. And, you know, whether you support this issue or not, I mean, I've heard very good arguments on both sides. I think I've stated pretty strongly, and Keith can vouch for that conversation, where my concern was the purchase of additional land, given that, you know, we needed to do better maintenance and have better public access. But I'll use the example, and I think it's a great example, of Central Park in New York, right? It cost the city of New York $7.4 million in the 1850s, and today, that land is valued, the commercial value of, is $39 trillion. And so imagine today, if someone, if a leader had made a decision to either put that land back on the tax rolls for a budget plug, because we're tax capped, or, you know, the people that benefit from going to Central Park every day. Now, I realize we may never have a Central Park in the county, but I think decisions we make today are decisions that impact future generations. So, you know, again, Alaska, I think, is pretty cool. The United States bought Alaska 600,000 square miles from Russia in 1867 for 7.2 million. It's just some interesting information. I just don't want this board to come back in a few decades saying, you know, we shouldn't have built that, developed this land, because acreage is hard to come by. If someone's going to build, I think the analogy was used that, you know, if someone was to build that land, and we talked about impact fees and recurrent taxes on that land, people are still going to build that house, they're just not going to build it on that land. So the county's still going to receive those tax benefits and those impact fees from that land, building in a different location than on this land that's eels property. So again, I don't want to sound like an eels advocate, but I think we need to be careful, you know, making statements that are just not entirely accurate, or at least don't have all the information. I wanted to ask you guys, and I wanted to talk to you, because we talked about the state not recognizing our purchases. I mean, can you talk a little bit to that? Can you speak a little bit to that history with the state? Did they deem that these weren't good purchases?
Can you hear this, Zonk?
Okay, sorry. So we were told, the Nature Conservancy, when they were a contractor, was told by the state, when the Florida Forever monies were drying up, to stop submitting until Florida Forever monies were replenished.
And that was from the state, correct?
That was from state.
That wasn't state criticism that we bought land that we shouldn't have scientifically bought?
No, they, no.
Next question. Do we have a scientific process for selecting eels properties?
Yes.
Do you want to speak at least? I mean, you don't have to go into 30 minutes diatribe of how we do that, but just maybe a few minutes talking about how we select that land.
Sure. Any applications submitted to the Selection and Management Committee, which is your science advisory board, and they match the criteria in the land acquisition manual, which is a board-approved document, to the landscape, they do site analysis, site visits, and they determine whether it meets that criteria. And if it meets that criteria, then it's eligible.
Next question, and again, I don't want to belabor the point, but what happens, other than us, you know, having to take over and maintain some of that land, what happens if that land isn't maintained, or if we put 10% of it back on the tax rolls? I mean, what's at risk?
Well, when properties were initially acquired, they had been sitting 30 to 50 years without active fire rotation, which is what they need to stay healthy. So it took us, you know, it takes typically about 15 years or so, 10, 15 years, to get one back into rotation. So if it's not managed, you can lose that in five to eight years, and then you're kind of back where you are, where you were in the beginning, either with exotics or fire, all those things.
And do all land purchases come to the board?
That's correct, yes.
Okay. And I know some of these answers, that's why I just want them on the record. Again, I think that at least possibly denying people the right to vote on it, I think, is, you know, at least on this issue, because they have voted it through twice, I think that, you know, I think that would be doing a disservice. Just because you, or myself, or somebody else may not agree with, you know, the intention of eels, or the politics of it, doesn't mean that it's not important to the people that live here, and that's my concern. Commissioner Smith?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I'll reiterate that last statement myself. There are things that we vote on here to give the public an opportunity to vote on that doesn't mean that we support it or that we don't support it. You and I have had that discussion before, Commissioner Tobias. The school vote is one that comes to mind. I want the people to have the opportunity to vote. What I think is the right way to vote, or not the right way to vote, is my personal decision when I walk into the voting booth. It's not for me to tell the people what they should or shouldn't do. So having said that, I want to refer to one other comment that Commissioner Zonk mentioned was the vacant lands. Well, you're right, but when the property appraiser is appraising these, she's appraising them as vacant land, not as developable land. If this went on the tax rolls, and we wanted to sell this to a developer that could put 300, 5,000 homes on it, you can bet that that would be worth a whole lot more than $886,000. So that's why those numbers, so what you're talking about there is apples and oranges. Kristi, I have a question for you. Would there be a cost involved if we didn't, I mean, to the state, if we don't continue with the eel program? What would happen to all those lands that we already own?
So there's a lot of legal questions that come up with that exact scenario. Obviously, we're in contract with the state for a certain portion of these lands, and as Commissioner Tobias had noted, there is the possibility to ask the state to be released from that contract. They don't have to grant that. There's also provisions that would permit them to come back to us if we were to default on our obligations to the state, but that would affect just the lands that are currently, where we're in contract with the state. Does that make sense?
Well, yeah, it does. And the reason I'm asking is because someone mentioned to me, and that's why I'm asking, that it could cost the county upwards of $30 to $40 million if we reneged on these deals.
Okay, I'm not familiar with where that came from, or the basis for that. That would require some more, you know, analysis, but certainly, one of the questions for the bond council, if you decided to do that, would be what we would do with the bonds if we then sold the land, what that money could be used for. There could be strings attached to that.
Anybody over there want to make a comment?
So your reference to the 30, 40 million, I believe that's a reference to the monies that the state has reimbursed the county over the years. So I think probably where that thought process is coming from is what would happen if the state provided that money, if the county asked for that money to support the acquisitions, and then they decided not to manage the acquisitions that they got the money for. So I don't know the answer to that question, neither. It'd be a legal question.
I don't either, but it's an interesting question to ask, because surely the state might have some thoughts on if they gave us 30 to 40 million, or $20 million to make these deals, and the deals go away, where are we if they decide that they want some money back? That could be a real red herring. So anyway, I didn't know the answer to it, I just, somebody threw that at me. the answer to it. I just, somebody threw that at me. One of the things that impressed me about what I heard tonight from some of the folks that support it, is that there's roughly a $5 return on every dollar invested. I don't know if that's true or not, but it certainly sounds good. In the household, the average household would pay something like $20 a household for this thing, if they did vote for it and it passed. For me, I think it's a quality-of-life issue, because it, it does, because we do have a great place to live, I think that raises property values. I don't think that's a stretch, but I can't offer scientific documentation or data that would support that. One of the people that came up and spoke, mentioned The View. And how come Eels isn't protecting all the wildlife and things that are being driven out of The View? The View, for those that don't know, is a hotel project that's beachside. It's right across the street from the ocean, across A1A from the ocean. I think that would be a prime example of why Eels is important to continue. Because if you don't have an Eels program, what's happening to property like The View on the beach can happen all over the county. So, what are you gonna say then, if the land that you cherish now, that's out by the St. Johns', or, or in some hammock, that is being protected by Eels, is now eligible to be a development, or, or a hotel? You're gonna have, so the Eels is protecting. So one of the people that actually was against this whole project, presented a prime example of why it's important for Eels to continue. We're talking about a tax on the people? Well, it's a tax on the people that they're gonna vote themselves. So this is one of those rare occasions where people are gonna say, "There's no taxation without representation. I voted for it. And if it passes, they can proudly say they voted for it and they got what they wanted. If they didn't vote for it, they can go back to the drawing board and try and fight it next time." Me personally, I think without Eels, we look like Broward County. I don't want this. I'm very familiar with Broward County. In fact, when I moved here back in 1986, I remember thinking, boy, this reminds me an awful lot of what Broward County looked like back in the early 70s. It was a great place to live. I wouldn't want to live in Broward County. And if you spend any time down there, I doubt if any of you would want to live there also. I don't want this county to look like that in 20 years. So without Eels, I think that's a real good possibility. So that's something to consider as well. I think that you mentioned Fox Lake. I already talked about that. I like your idea about using TDT money for maintenance, though. That, that was a good idea. And I think you had some other good ideas also. So, anyway, whether I vote for it or not is immaterial. It's, I think there's reasons on both sides. People can say you shouldn't vote for it. People say you should vote for it. I'm all for giving you folks, pro and con, the opportunity to vote for it. That's all I have. Thank you.
Commissioner Pritchett?
Thank you, ma'am. Commissioner Tobias, it's really hard not agreeing with you. You really brought a good presentation, sir. Commissioner Zonka and Commissioner Smith, I really agree with a lot of the comments you made. I do like putting things on the ballot, letting the voters decide, especially if, if we're doing a tax to where you guys have to make a decision what you want to do. You know, I, I kind of looked at the history of this, and I looked at the, the poll you ran. And when I talk to people, they, they're, I mean, you don't have to explain it to them. They're like, well, yeah, I'll support that. So it's, it's an interesting conversation that I, that I have with people about this. And actually, if you ask about the lagoon, I kind of got 50/50 on it, because their first thing was, how are you spending the money? But I do want to mention a couple things. When we're looking at these funds, one, it's got to come back to the county commission before we purchase lands. And we haven't had any money to purchase lands in a long time. And you guys do know with this commission, that anything that's brought forward, we're gonna really look at it and make, make sure it's, it's a good purchase. Because I got thinking about, what could be a problem with Eels purchases if something went haywire? And, boy, that's an old word, isn't it? I'm dating myself. But is, is if somebody had an angle and purchased property to drive up the property next to it that would never be developed. So that would be something that, I'm sure you guys wouldn't do it, that would always have me looking, making sure that that never would, would happen to be a reason for purchasing. The Fox Lake, I've got to say this. I know Laura Lee, you're from where I am. I don't know if anybody else is from North Brevard, but this is our Central Park. Anybody who lives in North Brevard, we, at least, you're out there often, out there at Fox Lake. The ecosystem there is phenomenal. I mean, there is gators. Do not take your puppies near the water. But it, it is, it's an amazing place. And the whole area shows up. And I am actually just really thankful that they did spend the extra money and, and picked that up. And that's worth way more than 25 million right now to, to North Brevard. And so I, Commissioner Tobias, you should probably stuck with the Indian mounds. I don't know anything about that one. But, sir, I do want to say you did a great presentation. I, just from hearing, talking to people, I, I've asked my office, and they all like it. They would vote for it. I read the ballot language. You're gonna have to tell me if you've got some, some, some struggles with it, because it seems pretty clear. But I, I'm gonna support this tonight.
Ta-da.
Ta-da. How'd you get that? Thank you. Okay.
Commissioner Tobias?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And Commissioner Smith, you brought up a good point, one that I might not have seen, or maybe I did, I don't know. Ms. Chevrek, is there a clause in that contract, maybe section 28 of the contract? And if you don't want to go through the, the whole contract, we can just go to slide number two. It says very clearly in there what our legal responsibilities are, does it not?
You're asking about the surrender of premises?
Correct.
That we can request to surrender the premises.
Is that, is that what this says?
That if we have no further use or any part, the lease shall give, that we give notice. And then if you go a couple lines down, it says the release shall only be valid if approved by the lessor.
Understood. But we still, we have the ability to ask the state.
Yes, we do. Absolutely.
Is that correct? With six months' worth of notice?
Absolutely.
Okay. Just, just to be clear, helps to come prepared on this stuff. Whether you like the answers or not, they need to be asked. And Mr. Knight, Eels, we talked about Eels. Can you give me the scientific, we talked about science. What is, am I off bounds? I couldn't find definition in any scientific manual whatsoever of environmentally endangered land. Is that a fictitious term, or is there a scientific backing to what Eels? Would I find it in any scientific textbook, I guess I'm asking?
I'm not aware of the origins of it, no.
Okay. So, thank you. We heard about how wonderful this is for the Indian River Lagoon, or the basin. We're gonna hear about that. Can you tell me how many pounds of nitrogen or phosphorus are removed because of this Eel land purchase here?
No, I cannot.
Why?
Well, we have, so our lands are natural shoreline. But the calculation really...
We just don't do the calculus, right?
Yeah, we don't have the calculus.
Okay. Got it. That's fair, that's fair. But when we spend sorrel land, we do calculations. Is that fair?
I believe so.
Okay, great. And when we make those decisions, do mayors of towns get bonus points for purchasing land?
I have no idea.
Okay. So they could maybe, right?
Yeah, I don't know.
Okay. Do folks that want their land purchased, that go and get a lobbyist, pay for a lobbyist, do they get preferential treatment?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay. I want to get to this direct democracy idea before I go into the ballot language. And I'll go to Rush Limbaugh. You know, his words, not mine. America is not a democracy. I think your kids understood that, and unfortunately, most people don't. We are a representative republic. We are not a direct democracy. If you don't buy Rush Limbaugh, let's go all the way back to Alexander Hamilton here, because we're shirking our responsibility on, on, on things. "The ancient democracies, in which the people themselves deliberated, never possessed one feature of good government. The very character was tyranny. Their figure, deformity." That was said all the way back in 1788. So, do people make bad decisions? Yes, they do. And let me give you some examples. Our constitution is an absolute joke. And before you get mad at me, let me tell you about our Florida constitution. We're on our sixth one. It is an embarrassment. Pregnant pigs is in our state constitution right now. We, we voted on it. That is in our state constitution about chaining them up. Let me tell you other bad decisions, because the way they're asked, that voters made, that have dire consequences, that we saw in our budget right now. We saw minimum wage get jacked up in 2020 to, effective at $10, all the way to $15 by September 30th, 2026. That was passed in 2020. Let me tell you another terrible decision that voters made, in my opinion. And again, elected officials did not make these decisions to put it on the ballots. They went the other route by collecting signatures. And I understand these folks can't collect signatures, because they're asking us to incur debt. But I'm just pointing out, the, the way you frame it has a lot to do with the outcome you get. You should know this about polling. Guys, we gave criminals the ability to get their right to vote back immediately. Voters in the state of Florida, because it was way, it was, it was, it was written, 64%, a red state, said in 2018, that restore the right of Floridians who have committed felonies. Thankfully, and unfortunately, these people haven't gone, they said, you know what, felons are bad, but you know what, we're not including sexual offenders in that. Thankfully, the voters, at least, those folks wanted to be included, but the voters didn't do that. So, guys, direct democracy is just a way for us to shirk our responsibility. If we're gonna do direct democracy, don't take a paycheck. Just pass all the votes on, on, onto the electorate. We can't pick and choose, and that's what we're doing here. Why couldn't we said, hey, voters, decide if you want to take $30 million and hand it to a Miami developer? But we decided to go in a different direction. And it looks like, I'm gonna go down on this one, but I'd like to go down fairly, so, or somewhat fairly, because these folks are asking the question that they want asked, that is not based in science. There's no such thing as Eels. You just heard from our science guru on Eels, that there's no such thing. It doesn't exist in one paper, one science book, but we'll make it up. Okay? So, so I made some changes. Instead of environmentally endangered, I'm calling government, because that's what it is. Government, land, and water area bonds. You can see what I changed up here. Shall Brevard County issue more bonds? Because it's very important that we have bonds, and we let folks know we've already done this. Now, bonds, it's an interesting word, because there's two sides to that, right? There's folks that hold the bonds, that have value, and there's folks that have to pay into that. So it's very clear that we make voters know which side of the ledger they're on. So I want to say bonds to incur debt. This, you're on the wrong side of that, especially when interest rates are going up. So I added to incur debt, because I think it should be clear to voters. And if you guys really want voters to make an informed decision, you should give them all the accurate information. To extend government lands, again, I've changed it from environmentally endangered. By the way, I've, I've sent this to the bond council. We got the check off, so I'm not just making this stuff up. Calling it government lands, because that's what they are. To change educated centers, I haven't changed anything. And lands that protect the Indian River Lagoon and St. John's River. You've just heard from our science guy. There is no science, no pound of nitrogen, no pound of phosphorus. The way that we mentioned healing the lagoon, it's, it's not there. We don't have that. So I think that should be excluded. To maintain, improve, exactly what it says there. Again, it says bonds, and I put in debt again, just to remind you, not to exceed $50 million. I have that written out. Let me tell you why I have that written out. Because in the initial, one, we wrote it out. Again, these folks are trying to hide things to elicit the response that they want to get. Apparently, it worked, whether you believe their numbers or not. And end it with the maximum legal rate, mature 20 years, payable, levying increased, because we're increasing their mileage. So it's very important that we point out, guys, that your taxes are going up, not to exceed .1465 mil. So I've made this much more clear. I've made this much more scientifically accurate. If you guys do want to turn it over, which I think is shirking your responsibility, and also not acting in a conservative nature, but either way, I think you should do it in a fair manner. Otherwise, you're just playing the exact same games that, that they're playing by putting this on the ballot. Because the words you put on the ballot absolutely matter. If you don't believe me, we've got pregnant pigs. We've got a minimum wage that is costing taxpayers, our taxpayers. We, we, we had to go get more money to fill that, okay? And, I mean, there's many, 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 many other things, but I just always go back to pregnant pigs. That, that we should at least present them with accurate data. Again, this is under the limit, 75 words. This is more honest, and I think that this probably is a better representation, an unbiased, honest representation of what's, what's being asked. So, I'm not gonna vote for it. You laugh, but this is 15 million bucks. You add the 30, that we're, we're at 80 million bucks. You know, I don't think 80 million dollars is a laughing matter. But I, maybe, I don't know. I might have misspelled something too, so I apologize. I'm the worst speller in the world, but I will never ask anyone for 30 million bucks. I will double-check before I ask you for 30 million bucks.
Or maybe proofread what your staff produces.
Proofread. At least, at least stuff comes out of my office. So that's the difference, right? If we looked at the agenda, I mean, that's the biggest question for voters out there, right? How much, we all get paid the same.
Mm-hmm.
And you may not like what comes out of my office, but I've never heard one, you know, I've heard, please, John, please don't stuff come out of your office, because you work hard. So I understand. I, I get it. I understand the frustration when folks come, come, you know, with, I don't know, numbers to, to the board. I totally get the frustration there. I really, absolutely do.
I've got a whole book full, and I'm, I'm happy to, to take another hour of people's times, just to rant and rant and rant. And I get that you don't support it, but we're belaboring the point. And I...
Okay. I'm sorry. I, you're right. Absolutely. We, I'll tell you...
You're gonna ask staff. I've met with staff. I mean, I've put my time in too.
Madam Chair, this is the problem with Sunshine. We all abide by it.
Yeah.
We absolutely all abide by it. And you're 100% right. I thought I had an inkling worth of chance to have someone say, you know what, maybe, in an environment where interest rates are going up, property values that are all-time high, we have 28,000 acres, the federal government's not reimbursing, I'm sorry, the state government is not reimbursing, maybe someone would say, we don't need to add more, more taxes. I was wrong. If I would have known that, I wouldn't have, I wouldn't, I wouldn't have done that. So I apologize for, for my passion. We saw passion out here, and I greatly appreciate that. I'm just asking that, if you want a fair representation of what people actually think, I think this provides a much more fair representation. But you're 100% right. 100% right. No matter what you put here, I will not be, I will not be voting for it. This is merely a suggestion. If you want to snow the voters with the fake words there that do not exist, by all means, go ahead and do that. It's just my job to point out that that's malarkey, what's, what's written there.
Commissioner Pritchett?
Yeah. Commissioner Tobias, I want you to know that, I know you're always true to your heart. And I, I have no qualms with the things you bring, or the, or the things that you, you challenge, sir. Just want you to know that. So here's the thing. I, I would be willing to look at this, but the problem is, if we do, we gotta have a supermajority vote to vote for it. And you just said you wouldn't vote for it. So it, it kind of hangs a few changes here that I don't think would make a big difference in the ballot. So you're just, you're not gonna vote on it if we changed it?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Yeah, I don't think you need a supermajority. You, you, you know, you don't need...
No, for this is a majority vote on this, because we're not changing the county charter.
Yep.
So for, if, if, the only time you need for is when you're doing an amendment to our county charter. This is a...
But we're calling it a different organization, government, land, and water areas. Do we have a government and area law?
We do not.
Okay. So that would be changing the charter, at least, I would believe, if we don't, we have an Eels program in place, and it Eels as part of our charter. This, we don't have a government, land, and water area.
We, you're, you're correct that we don't have, that's not the title that we use. I would have to look at the, the charter to see if that's...
Madam Chair, it's a good point. I've asked bond council. So, the, the folks that are responsible for this, the attorneys that...
For the bond debt, correct?
From going out... From going out to get this, the attorneys that, that, that look at this, yes, eels is more consistent, but this also fits. And I think this is a little bit more, more accurate. But, but either way, just to be clear, Commissioner Pritchett, if, if, if this required all four of us, I'd have said no at the beginning, and that would have been it. But it, yeah, you, you're, you know, I'm, I'm off the table on this one, Madam Chair. I've just got a passion like these other folks do. Mine's just on the conservative side of things.
Yes, sir. So, anyways, Commissioner, I'm, I'm good with this, but these changes here aren't, you know, the, the title of it, I probably wouldn't call it government land. I'd probably call it government, I wrote this down, government environment, well, governmentally protected environmental land. But it does, it doesn't matter to me. I think everybody's familiar with the eels and what they do, but I don't mind spelling out 50 million dollars and, and that. But I'd like to hear what you said. Again, this was pretty easy for me to understand, and, and this, this doesn't give me a ton of heartburn, so.
If I, if I could, it has to be 75 words, and I believe what's on the ballot here is 75 words.
Okay.
So, if we start changing with it, you're going to have to take some things out and add things. His proposal, I believe, was 74, Commissioner Tobias, is that? So, the way he's got it structured, he did do the, the word count. But the more you play with it, the more you have to be conscious of the, the number of words.
Thank you, ma'am.
So, um- And this wasn't part of our agenda package?
No.
This was never added to our agenda?
No.
Okay. I didn't think so. I just wanted to verify.
Okay. Well, I'm good with the original one, but Commissioner Tobias, that, that doesn't give me a lot of stress either. You didn't do a bad job trying to rewrite it, so.
Commissioner Smith?
Well, since we're, we're not going to consider any of this, I don't have, I don't have a question then. Okay.
Okay. I was going to make a few points, but I don't want to get into a big argument with Commissioner Tobias. I mean, the Charter Commission, Review Commission also has the opportunity to put things on the ballot without bringing it through the Board of Elected Folks. So, and those are our appointments. I like the idea of using TDC funding for that.
I do, too.
But I actually like more the idea of using TDC funding for affordable housing, which is a proposal I'll bring later. I wanted to see if the affordable housing thing would get through our Charter Review Commission first versus us having to possibly put an ordinance in place. So, that's something else in the works we've talked about. So, Commissioner, what's your pleasure at this point?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve. The way it's part of our agenda. I have a motion by Commissioner Pritchett, second by Commissioner Smith. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Motion passes unanimously.
Not yet.
Hmm?
Not yet.
Five minutes?
Three to one.
Commissioner Pritchett. Oh, I'm sorry. Motion passes 3-1. I apologize. Getting late in the hour. Commissioner is requesting a five-minute break.
All righty then.
He said, "all righty."
Moving on to board reports. Mr. Batte?
I have no report.
Ms. Sherevic?
Commissioners, I have one item. At the last board meeting, the board voted to partially rescind the PACE program as it applied to residential and nonprofit organizations, but leave the program available to commercial properties. In drafting the changes to the resolution, a question came up as to whether the board meant to limit the rescission to single-family residential as opposed to all residential, which would potentially include multifamily residential and those developers that use the PACE program as part of their financing to build their complexes. So I'm asking for the board's guidance and direction. If your intent was to only apply the rescission to single-family residential, I would request a motion to clarify that the PACE resolution is to repeal the program as to single-family residential properties and as to nonprofit organizations.
Ms. Prichet?
Yes, ma'am. When I was trying to negotiate, I was thinking single-family residential because other than that, it's going to be a business building a complex.
I agree.
That's where I was, too.
Commissioner Tobias, are you good? I'm sorry.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I wanted to do away with it altogether, but I appreciate the compromise and this clarification does that. So I'm gonna be with this one as well. And I want to, again, thank you for the compromised language. It was nothing I saw, and it was a great way to meet in the middle. So I'm glad this clears that up.
Do you need a vote on that?
I do.
Make a motion to residential, single-family clarification.
Have a motion by Commissioner Prichet for clarification to single-family residents for rescinding the PACE program. A second by Commissioner Smith. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Commissioner Prichet?
Yes, ma'am. I've got two items, actually. We were able to allow the county manager and the attorney's office to do, work on their income to make it a little bit more in the market. And I was talking to the county manager this week about the directors, and he still has a lot of concern about their income not being market either. So I wanted to maybe, if we could, make a motion to address the value in the internal equity, market equity and the merit, and let the county manager make adjustments appropriate in the existing budget without there being any change in the budget. Mr. Batte, you could handle doing that, right? If you could look at it?
That's very clear to me.
But... What are you guys doing?
I don't know, they're giggling. Somebody was laughing.
I appreciate it. I love how that's very clear to Frank. That's why he's paid so much more. I have no idea, but the fact that Frank is in support of it, I support you, Commissioner Prichet.
Thank you, sir. Actually, I asked him to help me word it in a way that would be appropriate and legal.
Okay. Does the county manager already have that discretion?
This is just making it very clear that the board would like to see me act on that. But yes, I would.
So no one chastises you if you modify salaries?
I appreciate, excuse me, I appreciate the board's support. I think it's something that's very much needed, as the commissioners indicated, and getting that reaffirmed for the board as we move forward, I think is helpful to me.
Okay. I don't have an issue.
We did a motion in second, so...
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. I've got one more item I want to bring up. Pretty soon here in the next little bit of time, I'm gonna bring forward and ask you guys to allow, I need to make a change to my appointee on the TDC board. And the reason for this is, well, first of all, I want to start out with, they're all wonderful people on there, and they are so smart, they do their work, but I've realized from getting to be appointed on this board that everybody on there is pretty much from Cocoa Beach. And District One, you know, if we did everything, you guys were all from District One, we would be focusing on District One. So I take the blame for this because I really didn't think about that a lot when I was working on appointees. So I've been reaching out to some people in our district, and I think I have been able to find someone who runs the visitor center, Kennedy Space Center. They're head of Delaware North, and they have a hotel. And I think for District One, this will be a good thing for us because he's going to be focusing on those launches and those things that would bring more of the tourism from other areas of the country into that area. And we have got a beautiful natural beach. It probably needs a little more love, too. I wanted to mention this to you guys as well because I've really realized, looking at the tax dollars coming in, that USSA probably could use a little more representation, too, Commissioner Smith. And Commissioner Zanka, I would just want to mention, too, that the Palm Bay area and anti-Atlantic beach area doesn't get a lot of it either. Commissioner Tobias is not doing too bad, actually. And District Two is not doing too bad as well. And again, this is no reflection on the people that are on there. I think they're really, really smart, but I think they're focused. And so, very much appreciate them, but I'm gonna bring back to you guys and see, we have an ability to change. And I want to give time to talk to my appointee. Well, I can't, he's on the board with me. But I really, I really need to make this change for District One, and it's just all about getting the diversity on there. So I wanted to mention that to you guys, so you could be thinking about it when I bring it up. But if you're good with the idea of it, because we're gonna have to have a vote on it to change, so...
Do you need a supermajority or simple majority vote for that?
Simple majority, correct?
Yes, simple. Simple majority.
Yeah. I don't even recall who your appointment is, but I trust your judgment based on...
He's a wonderful person. It's really hard to do it. He's a wonderful person.
Well, I would just make sure, because that board has such a weird, you know, requirement for makeup.
This'll be exact trade-out. It's a hoteler for hoteler.
Okay.
Okay?
I don't have a problem supporting whatever you want to do with that. Anybody else have any input?
Yeah. She mentioned me changing mine. I had already spoken to USSA last week because my appointee, her business where she is, she works in the hotel industry, but I think she's in your district. So I was thinking the same thing along the same lines, that I would like to have somebody from District Four, because I don't have anybody. And USSA, yeah, yeah, USSA brings in tons of room nights. But I talked to Christine, and she said, well, there would have to be some kind of clarification or some sort, so...
It's just that they're under contract with us, so there'd be a conflict waiver that would have to come through the board, but it can be done. Yes.
I think that board by design is conflicted, honestly.
So is that something we could do tonight?
You could, the board could vote on the appointment tonight, and next time, we could bring back the conflict waiver to be voted on.
Okay. So you want to combine the two?
If you, I mean...
I, if...
Well, that would be up to Kristi, because I don't know if we can or can't. We have two separate votes.
We have to have applications ready to turn in, too, don't we?
Generally, you put it on the, you put it under the appointments part of the agenda.
Okay.
Right.
We can do it at the next meeting.
Right.
Okay.
That also gives everybody time, too. I'm not trying to hurt anybody or offend them. It gives them time to listen to. And I can't call them, I'm on the board.
Yeah.
But I have the greatest respect for these people, I really do, so...
I understand where you're coming from, because looking at where some of that spending is and seeing some of the areas that probably should be getting a little more attention.
If I was there, and I lived there and worked there, I would do the same thing. I mean, you have to love where you live and do your best to do those things. I get it. And it's just, it's a difficult board.
Is that it?
Yes.
Okay. Commissioner Tobias?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And my TDC appointee is Mr. Keith Winston. So I believe, if he doesn't live in District Four, he certainly has a large portion of District Four. But anyway, I, you know, that's on the side. But on the TDC, just to give the board a heads-up, first of all, I want to thank, and I said this at the meeting, I want to thank the chair for not appointing me there. That was one long meeting. And I want to thank Commissioner Prichet for being the appointee and taking that so seriously. And I think it is extremely unfortunate, the way that, you know, you were treated. There's really no excuse for that. I lost big time up here today, and you know what? We will live to fight another day. We will work together, and we will find compromise. I just think that those folks need to learn a little bit better how to learn, or how to lose graciously. Not that I do a good job, but I'm better at it than what I was. But anyway, the first one's the TDC. Believe in equity, and just to give the rest of the board this, this is what I showed up, and during public comment, I was under three minutes. I would like to offer that same grant that we offered, Driftwood, to the rest of the tourist development collectors. I brought this to the meeting on the 27th, and I asked if this was something that interests them, they could discuss and bring back. That's how we feasibly could do it, but that was just the first shot at things. Now, pardon me if there's any spelling errors, but I am the absolute worst speller. But I just wanted to give anyone, everyone a heads-up that I had presented that, and it's interesting how it will turn out, but I'm not going to come to the board unless I hear something from them. So that was number one. Number two?
Spelling error the second I looked down at it, I swear to you.
Did I, spelling error again? Son of a motherless...
You spelled tourist incorrectly.
I did. I looked at aquarium. Yes, I'm the worst speller.
I wasn't even looking.
Wow, you were a good speller. Okay, the second one was on the front page of today's paper. That would be the letter that was sent to a former county attorney. And let me tell you why I'm bringing it up, other than I got a little bit of a chuckle out of it. Representative, or better yet, Chairman Fine, had been very concerned with the lobbying ethics that were in place in Brevard County. And it's a little bit unfortunate, because most of that had come out of my office when I was first elected. I think his intent was for it to go a little bit further, and I have no problem with that. What I'm asking is that if the board wants to go any further with the state audits, income of lobbyists, and verifies whether or not that is accurate, they do that randomly, I am more than willing to go in that direction. I just want to let you know that, and the Chairman Fine know, that we do have some regulations in place, and we had to enforce those with a letter that went out. So I thank the county manager for fulfilling that ordinance and sending that letter. Ideally, we hope this never happens again, but should it, I just want to let the board know that I'm open for any changes if you want to make this any more strict. I think we had a good starting place, but it's there. And finally, we got a letter, a random letter, sent from the county manager, and I had no idea what the heck it was. And he made a great move by immediately forwarding it to us. Beginning of July, the commission received, I'm guessing, a well-intentioned but severely misinformed letter from Brigadier General Stephen G. Purdy, United States Space Force. Mentioned this letter were facilities, quote, pending county approval, and, quote, waivers of certain zoning restrictions. We were asked to, quote, expedite the necessary permitting, and it was mentioned, national defense and security. Obviously, this probably raised some hairs on the back of your head, as it did mine. And not only that, but one of my former employees is in that department. So they immediately jumped on it, and I, we got another letter, and I just, it's a thank you in all honesty. In reality, as you can imagine, there were no applications in planning development at all. This was not an acceptable letter, because it blamed the county and alluded to the fact that we were impeding on, like I said, national security. So this is just a thank you to the follow-up letter and the apology that we got recently, clearing the air that, in fact, county staff was responsible and professional, were not, in fact, holding up any parts of the process. This just goes to show, our county staff does an outstanding job balancing everything we bring forward as a board, along with all the routine jobs that require to perform the county to function properly. And I'd just like to say thank you. We need to, we were right here, guys. Our staff works really darn hard, and I'm just extremely, extremely proud of them. And now, so is the Brigadier General at US, United States Space Force. So I greatly appreciate all their hard work, their continued hard work, things we don't even know. So those are my, those are my three, those are my three things. I'll ask you this right here, real quickly. I was disappointed to hear that no one had registered for that program that would allow for proximity for businesses that cater towards kids. It came out of my office. I was gonna send it to those businesses, letting them know they had the option to do that. Would you like that singularly be from my office? Would you like that as a board? Just giving them the address if they want to and what it entails? It's completely up to you. But we're not sending it to another government agency, so I don't have to put the disclosure. But I also don't want to be sending things into your district, you know?
I think it's a terrific idea.
I have a call from the board, because it may, it may be a little more accepted than from singular commissioner.
Madam Chair, what I will do is I'll draft a letter, just a draft, send it to you. I'll identify any of the businesses that are in my district that I'm aware of, and maybe other districts. I would hope that you guys would do the same. If we all get that to you, maybe we can just cut and paste and send that all to the district. I really appreciate those folks bringing it forward, that no one has taken advantage of that. And I think it's our job to let folks know that we have the intentions of keeping kids safe as possible. And again, thank you for doing that, Madam Chair.
Registered citizens.
Registered citizens.
Not sex offenders or sex predators.
Madam Chair, I lost badly today, but I thank you guys' indulgence for putting up, putting up with me for an hour and a half. I greatly appreciate it.
I had to stop talking, so I was starting to get emotional.
Sorry, sorry.
I had a little deja vu from a while ago.
I know. You want us to come through your office?
Yeah, if we could, you know, we want to check the spelling and the content, just to make sure.
Oh, my God. He went there.
Touche.
And I'm not one to criticize spelling, but, you know, you opened that door a little bit.
That's really funny.
And it's funny that you said, I don't know if it was a spelling error, the second I looked down, I see you spelled tourist incorrectly.
I bet you there's another one in there, too.
Yeah, it was on every copy, but...
I'm not gonna find it.
All right. Commissioner Smith?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I'm just curious if my fellow commissioners have any interest in discussing and moving forward with putting an item on the ballot. This, I bring it up tonight because this is the last chance opportunity we would have to do it. I can give you some background. When I was a candidate the first time for this job, I, like most people in this county, didn't know a whole lot about being a county commissioner or what was involved. And I say that in all sincerity, because 90% of the people whose doors I knocked on, and documented that I knocked on about 7,500 doors that first time, they were more versed in national politics, because they see national politics on TV. They don't get a whole lot of politics locally. And so, as I've been in this job, and I'm a big, big term limit guy, but I see that from my perspective, it wouldn't be a bad idea if we had three terms available for commissioners. And I haven't said anything prior to this, because I thought our charter review guys would bring it up. But interestingly enough, they're going pretty much the opposite way. I understand, they want to limit people to two terms, unlike now, we have two terms, and you can sit out a term and run again if you want at a later date. So they want to do away with that part. So we could bring it up tonight. We could vote on it tonight if we got the vote, and we could put it on the ballot. But there's no point in belaboring the point if you guys don't have any interest. So I'd just like to hear what you guys are, what you're thinking. And Christine, do you want to weigh in at all to discuss what we would have to do this evening?
Sure. So it's a four-person vote, and then, once you vote on ballot language, we'd need to send it to the three-person panel. They check over the required items in the charter. Is it a single topic? Is it in line with the Florida Constitution and other general laws? If they give the thumbs up, we could then bring it in a resolution form back on August 16th, because obviously, you don't have the resolution prepared tonight. So whatever that ballot language is, that could kind of be a way you could, we could go about it. And then you would take the final vote on the resolution on the next county commission meeting.
Let me ask you this. If it goes on the ballot and it passes, would that allow these three commissioners to run next year, or two years from now? I guess it would.
I don't know if you've mentioned what your proposal is quite yet.
Okay, well, my proposal, my proposal is to allow or permit, probably is a better word, commissioners to run for three consecutive terms.
So all of you would have served two, and so it would seem you could come back for the additional third term.
Right. Not me, but these three could, because they, they would be up for election in two more years, if this passes.
Right.
Okay.
Commissioner Prichet?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm glad you brought this up, because I was thinking about it, but I would rather you have done it, because you're on your way out. But I, I do like this idea, but it's, you know, it'd have to be all four of us, or it's not going to happen at all. The reason why, well, one, it's going to be sad to lose Kurt here in a few months.
Depends if you're Kurt or not.
Well, it's, you know, the first two years, I don't know, you guys are smarter than I am, you picked it up quick, but it took me a couple of years even to figure it out, go through the billion-dollar budget, and develop the relationships, figure out, you know, the, what we have going on, and to really get a role in the first four years. Since we've been doing this now, I feel like I've been a little more effective since the last two times, the last two years. So I, you know, it's not something I would want to do forever, but I can really see the benefit to the community to have commissioners in for three terms. And I got thinking about this, because our city council, they don't even have term limits, and, you know, there's so many federal government, and many that don't have any either. And so, I mean, I get it. I understand the problem of career with it, but I don't think 12 years is a career. And honestly, as smart as you guys are, you actually got better the last two years as well. And what I love about you guys, and I would love it if this did go through, and we all did this again, is we don't agree all the time, but we have got such a great relationship. We speak this out in public, and we do our homework. And honestly, I have never served with better people in my whole life than the people up here right now. So I would support this. I'd be very tickled if we did it. But those are the reasons why. And I know we're all missing a lot of opportunity out there, you know. I love doing what we're doing. Don't do it for the money. But it has cost my family and other career opportunities a bit. But you know what? I love this community, and I would be willing to do that. But again, it's, I would love to hear what you guys are thinking, but I would be in agreement with that, Commissioner Smith. And I really thank you for bringing that up, because you wouldn't even get to enjoy being with us again. But yeah, I like it.
Ms. Smith?
One other point, in doing a little research on this, and again, I'm a big term limit guy, but we're still going to have term limits if we did this. You have term limits of three. And hopefully, if you have a commissioner that has done a good job, he or she would get reelected, but you would also have the opportunity to not reelect him. And, you know, like Benjamin Franklin said, yeah, it was him. Fish and, what was it? Fish and visitors have something in common, that's they both start to smell after three days. Well, you could say the same thing about commissioners, I guess. So out of the 67 counties that we have in Florida, only nine have term limits for commissioners. I don't know if you guys knew that. I think that six have three, no. Yeah, six have three-year term limits, and three have two-year term limits. So we're one of the three that have two-year term limits.
I mean, two-term limits?
Two-term limits, yes. So it's not something that everybody has.
And we're probably among the lower-paid commissioners as well.
Oh, no doubt. Well, that was the other thing I was thinking. I would love to see maybe just a cost of living increase put on commissioner salaries. And then, if that were to be done, put a limit on it, so that if it ever got to be in 100 years or so, up to the current, what other commissioners are getting. Because I talk to commissioners around the state, and most of them are making $80,000 to $90,000 a year. So we're way, way behind. And like we've all talked about, and we know, we're not doing this for the paycheck, because we wouldn't have been, we wouldn't be here in the first place. But at the same time, I think the public recognizes that we work really hard for the amount of money that we make. So I don't think it would be ridiculous to ask the people to vote on a cost of living increase.
It would have to be the voters.
Right. It would have to be the voters. So anyway, those are my thoughts. So if you guys want to do it, we'd have to have four people vote for it. If you don't, then it goes away.
Ms. Tobias?
This is where I'd like to horse trade. So I'd have to think about it. I certainly made, I've made a promise when I ran, which was an easy promise to make, right? Because there were only two terms. So I'm gone either way. That should make a lot of people happy. a lot of people happy, even if this did go through. I'm, one thing, I made a promise to folks, I wouldn't raise taxes, I wouldn't vote for budget, and I would only serve eight years. I'm going to have to swallow that argument that you guys made about direct democracy, and yet I just was challenging it the entire time. I, I think I can send, you gotta get, you gotta give me, you gotta give me a day on, on, on this one. And I'd be more than willing to, I think I can probably send a position paper out to let you know. I think it's a lot easier, the, by the way, the statute has a maximum that commissioners can make. It's based on population. And I think that that's probably an issue when a certain commissioner, now representative, former senator, capped it, he didn't put in, you know, a cost of living. There's a lot of issues here about, you know, getting qualified candidates that can dedicate a full-time on a, on a salary, and it's comparable. Yeah, I, I, I think that as long as we were not going to benefit personally from that, I think that that is something that probably would look, would be good to pass along to the voters. Again, I'd have to think about that one, just to be very clear. That would be, I mean, I, if, if I were to benefit one penny from it, there is absolutely no way that I would want to put that on the ballot. But for, for future commissioners, I would think that a cost of living that would be tied, I think the school board might do something that's pretty darn similar with, with theirs. And Frank's nodding and waving his hand over there. Madam Chair?
Yeah.
Can I punt over to the county manager?
There's two items. One, there currently is a charter provision that deals with your salaries, that talks about every two years is the only, is the time under the current charter provision that you can make an adjustment. The board, no board has done that in a lot of years. And you could only go up to, I think it's, and it's off the top of my head now, CPI or COLA. In other words, you could never catch up, I mean, even infinitesimally small, to where the salaries are by the state. So that whole provision, relative to come up with new language, if the board's interested in, in, in that being looked at, we'd have to do it to figure out how we could do that, because there is current language that deals with salaries in there. The second item is, if the board decides to talk about, and would like to, just from a timing aspect, and maybe the board's already aware of it, that Thursday at 1:00 is the next charter review commission, where they have the opportunity, they are going to deal with that issue of the term limits. So you're going to have the meeting after that, in the evening, on zoning, which may give you the opportunity to know exactly where things are, which can, you know, help your dialogue as to what it is you feel is appropriate to do, in terms of putting something before the voters.
Well, and that was one of the other things I wanted to mention, that if we were to decide to do that this evening, then I would have to counsel my fellow commissioners to reach out to their appointees, to make sure that they don't counter what we're doing. Give them direction, in other words. But Kristy, can we come back on Thursday night?
You, you can certainly come back on Thursday night. I, I wouldn't wait until the 16th, because you do have to go to the three-member panel, and they do need a little, they are under contract, but it's a very quick term.
So Thursday nights are drop dead, so you don't have to make a decision overnight. You got two days.
Sounds good. I'll have something. Madam Chair?
Yes.
Sorry, I'll have something.
Anyway, I just wanted to bring it up. Do you have?
I would just say, I, I, you know, we talked about this before, but I never wanted to be the one, you know, accused of, like Commissioner Tobias said, trying to benefit from that salary change. But I believe that there's value in, in providing a, you know, a salary that's equal to the work that's being expected of their commissioner. So if I don't personally benefit from it, I'm happy to support anything that comes back as far as salary changes for future commissioners. If there's commissioners up here that want to run for a third term, I, I would be more than happy to put that to the voters. I will not be running for a third term myself, but...
And I think that's, you know, I think that's what, that's what our aim is here, is put it, put it to the voters. Let them vote. I, I think it's a good idea. The voters might not, or they might. But we, they won't have an opportunity to vote on it unless we give it to them.
Yeah.
But that's really the purpose, and what I'm trying to get at. As I said, when I ran the first time, I had no idea what was involved in this job. I'm sure every one of you will agree with me 100% that you're far more effective in the second year, um, second term, because you know so many people, you know so many phone numbers, you can reach out to people in county government, other counties, state government, the feds. You can do that, because you've done all these things in being a commissioner. So you're far more effective in the second term. And I would think the third year, third term would yield even more benefit. And then they can put you out to pasture like a, like a three-day-old fish.
And there's still a term limit in place, you know what I mean?
Yes, there's still, yes, yeah, it'd be three terms. So there's still be a term limit.
It's funny, no one bats an eye at the constitutional offices that have no term limits.
I know, right?
It's sort of like the legislature who doesn't have sunshine, right?
Exactly.
But we do, you know?
I know. You know, I wish we didn't have such hard sunshine, not that we make deals in, in private, but it'd be a lot easier to fuss at each other offline than to do it in public, and we have to.
Yeah, Mr. Tobias.
We could cuss, is what you're saying.
Who, not me, Kristy. But I, I just, you know, you're going to break my heart if you guys don't make the opportunity again later, though. But, but I agree with you. I don't mind doing an increase with future commissioners. I wouldn't take a, I wouldn't benefit either. I'd be with you. I would, I wouldn't do any change on it.
But maybe we go back to what the original language was before the good representative changed it.
You weren't carrying it around. Look at you.
I can't take credit for that.
I always admire the, the person who is independently wealthy and just says, oh, we don't need that much money, because they don't, you know?
Yeah, but you know what? Also, too, to get good people running in these seats that are qualified, and you guys are definitely qualified, you know, you, you have to pay that opportunity cost that a lot of people are missing. You know, you get what you pay for. But you guys are, are pretty awesome. So, yeah, Commissioner Tobias, all the pressures on you, sir, so.
All right, that's it.
That's all you had?
Talk about dropping a bomb there at the end.
Right? It's a big bomb.
It's gracious.
All right. I have to pull up what I was going to read. So I don't know if you guys heard, and I don't know if you heard at all from the EDC. The EDC, you know, basically applied for the county through, through USAA. And when we actually were nominated and awarded one of Florida's Space Coast Great American Defense Communities, based on our, our love and our, our commitment to our military, and, you know, a number of veterans and, and active and retired that we have living here and stuff. And it's, it's pretty awesome. It's a pretty big honor, and they were pretty excited to come out and talk to us about it. So we're going to be getting an award. So I will bring that back, and I'll bring a little bit more information. But it's, it's pretty cool stuff, you know? I always pride myself on being very, you know, proud to tell people that I'm from a community that supports our military, and with over 70,000 veterans and retired and active that live here, and choose Brevard County as their home. It, it gives me a sense of pride. So I just wanted to make that mention.
Yeah, and all you have to do is go to the Civ Mill and know that, because our Civ Mill, these, these folks that are in the military, that serve all over the country, to a single person, they'll tell you, when you go to the Civ Mill, that this is the tightest group of Civ Mills that any, any organ, any county city has. They, we're just, we just work really well with our military.
Yeah. That's true. All right, well, that's all I have. So seeing no other business, meeting adjourned.